We'll return to order. Good evening, it's Monday, May 15th, 2017. We've completed an executive session and we're moving now into special business. So we have two items of special business this evening. They are proclamations. The first is a proclamation around Safe Boating and Paddling Week. Whereas, on average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., with the vast majority of those accidents caused by human error and poor judgment, and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, the city of Mercer Island is completely surrounded by Lake Washington. And whereas, a large number of Mercer Island's residents of all ages engage in recreational boating. And whereas, the mission of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary is to promote and improve recreational boating safety by teaching boating safety courses and conducting vessel safety checks. Now therefore I, Mayor Bruce Basset, do hereby proclaim May 20th through 26th, 2017, as Safe Boating and Paddling Week, and encourage all of Mercer Island's residents to dedicate themselves to learning about and practicing safe boating, including wearing life jackets. Approved this May 15th, 2017. Now, I didn't get a chance to figure out, I see someone with the uniform, I'm guessing that you might be the right person, want to come on up? We have a copy of the proclamation, but I'm hoping you will say a few words as well, if you've got something to add, so.
My name is Deborah Alderman, I'm from the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary, from the flotilla that serves Seattle and Mercer Island, and thank you so much for making the proclamation, we're very honored. And we so appreciate you helping us get the word out about boating safety, and we would like to partner with the city, and I had a nice conversation with the Marine Patrol folks about collaborating, so thank you so much, and let's hope that we have an accident-free and drowning-free summer, and I appreciate everybody's help on that, so.
Very good, thank you. And so if you want to come up, we have a copy of the proclamation here, which you may do as you please with. And turning maybe to our police force chief, anything you'd add? This was focused around the Coast Guard Auxiliary, but of course, we have a significant part of our activity is on our police forces to provide.
Yes.
Services and safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate the proclamation there, and I wanted to take this opportunity for those of you on the council and/or in the community who have not met, our Marine Patrol Sergeant, Sergeant Brian Noel, if you could stand up for a minute. Brian's in charge of our Marine Patrol program, so I wanted to make sure that we had a chance to see who Brian was, and to also thank him for the work he does in partnership with the Coast Guard in keeping our boating community and swimming and recreating in the water that community safe, so thank you, Brian.
All right, we have another proclamation, and this is to Public Works Week. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Mercer Island. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, employees from state and local governments and the private sector, responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and the other structures and facilities essential for our customers, citizens. And whereas, it is in the public's interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children of the United States of America to gain knowledge of, maintain a progressive interest in, and understand the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. Now therefore I, Mayor Bruce Basset, on behalf of the Mercer Island City Council, do hereby designate the week of May 21st through 27th, 2017, as Public Works Week in Mercer Island, and I encourage citizens to join me in honoring our Public Works Department professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and in recognizing the substantial contribution they have made to our health, safety, welfare, and quality of life. Approved, May 15th, 2017. And I'm not sure, do we have somebody from staff who's, Jason, are you gonna?
So, Public Works, Gregory Skinner, I have Anton Alhau.
They are long-serving and shy.
Clint Morris and Casey Nelson, all from our engineering group, and Patrick Yamasha, our city engineer, who also helps facilitate and participates in public works, and thank you for the proclamation. Our staff is very well-versed in what they do, they work long hours and work very hard, and they're proud of what they do, and this is part of us getting out and sharing our message, participating in the national event. We participate in the upcoming JCC Touch a Truck, we have a booth at summer celebration, and we're trying to get out information about what Public Works is from Mercer Island, as we are a full-service community, so thank you for the proclamation, and thank you guys all for the great work that you do.
That is great, and it's a pleasure to be able to recognize our staff for the work that they do. Jason, I've got a copy for you here, if you want to come grab that. There you go, thank you. All right, concluding special business, we move now to our first city manager's report, as we change things around with our new city manager, so welcome, Julie.
Thank you. Honored to present the first-ever city manager's report, and just to inform the council, staff, and the community, this is really around highlighting key events that may have took place over the past couple weeks since we last met, and then upcoming events that are taking place over the next couple weeks, so it's really to highlight those key things, as well as successes, whether or not we, hopefully we make movement on some of the key council goals and that sort of thing. So, I want to call your attention to Sound, I'm sorry, Metro will be hosting, they're calling it our happy birthday for the 6:30 shuttle, so the city and King County will be holding a community meeting in advance of renewing the 6:30 shuttle from Mercer Island to Seattle. The community is intended to celebrate the success of the shuttle, which it is very, very successful, review the results from customer satisfaction survey fielded in the fall, and to talk about the proposed changes for September, and to give writers a chance to weigh in on those changes. So, that meeting is being held tomorrow at 6:30 to 7:30 at the community center, so obviously the writers of the shuttle have been notified through flyers and a notice, and we're certainly hoping that those who really take advantage of this service can attend the meeting and provide some really important feedback to Metro and staff. Also want to call your attention to Affordable Housing Week, there are a number, oh, thank you, a number of events taking place really across the east side, so there's one happening this evening, there's another one on Tuesday, and really just, I think, to highlight this important issue, and as you know, you make a contribution to ARCH as a way to support affordable housing initiatives, and so there are a number of events happening, and rather than go through all that with you, just to make note that that is out there. Also, this will, we'll talk about this as part of, as part of our I-90 update, but the town center also will experience, we believe, some parking impacts as a result of the closure of South Bellevue Park and Ride, so our city staff has been working with the Mercer Island Chamber to host a meeting with our business district, town center business district, and that meeting will take place this Thursday, 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Mercer Island Fire Station, so we really want to review the current street parking program with them, and really encourage them to be our eyes and ears come the end of the month to let us know how they think the parking is working, give us feedback on actual enforcement and those kinds of things, so this, very pleased that the Chamber is working with us on this. And also, just want to congratulate our police department for having a very successful bike-to-school event, as you can see through the photos, which are worth a thousand words, it was really a great event. I love the first photo where our officer is photobombing the girls, it's just great, but really, this is an opportunity really to teach our kids how to safely bike to and from school, and also to remind our commuters, remind those who are dropping kids off, that they're, they need to keep their eyes and ears peeled for bike riders out there, so I want to thank Sergeant Crimp, Officers Armsby, and Hyder for participating in this program. It certainly, I think, makes a difference in our community. And hey, if you're looking for a summer job, we have some! We're looking for responsible, fun staff who might want to be beach manager, lifeguards, day camp directors, hey, go apply today, it's a great way to learn about the city, provide a great service to our community, and you can make a little money as well. Damn, they're hiring! It does, it does, actually. And then, we want to invite our community to come and talk about dogs in Pirate Nook Park, so our city staff is hosting, the next meeting is coming up this Saturday at 5:30, meet at the Chios at Island Crest Way, and the staff will provide about a 10-minute update, and then go on a walk throughout the park to talk about this, so those are a few things, Council, I wanted to highlight and bring to your attention. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we come now to appearances, so a time when anybody may address the council on any issue they wish. Complicated rules of engagement are on the back door, but they really boil down to please just be civil, begin by introducing yourself and giving us your address with that. I guess the one other thing I would note, we have three additional public hearings this evening, so this is a chance to speak on anything, but you will have a chance to speak on the public benefit rating system a bit later, and the interim zoning ordinance for light rail later, and the six-year TIP later. So if you're able to stick with us and would like to speak closer to the issue at hand, and perhaps after a staff presentation, I haven't coordinated with staff to know whether there will be before each of those, but, so you could speak now if you choose, or wait and speak then. So with that, we are open for public appearances. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Jim Stanton, I live in, at 7812 Southeast 78th Street, and I'm, unfortunately have a conflict tonight, so I'm appearing now. I'd like to speak on the tip. I work in, one of the members of the steering committee of Neighbors in Motion, which for the past five or six years has worked closely with staff, the community, has conducted surveys, worked at, appear to lead for Green to make sure we understand community issues and priorities to make bicycling safer on Mercer Island. Our priorities are the same as they were last year, and just to summarize, we think it's important to have a very safe north-south route that families and young people can use, we don't have one now, it was the highest priority listed in the 2010 City Bike Ped Plan. The other is continuing shoulders on the Mercers. I too would like to, as well as Dan Graus, I'd like to see it completed before, within Dan Graus' lifetime, and it always gets, well, sorry, that seems to be the item that always gets deferred in tip meetings. And then finally, I think we've really come to understand in the last year, and working with Sound Transit, with DOT, with King County Wastewater, how important the master plan is in leveraging, setting standards that will leverage their money to improve the I-90 trail across the Aubrey Davis Park. I don't think a year ago we understood it, but after the work we've done with advocating on behalf of bike issues with those groups, they really need a master plan that holds them, that'll raise the standards when they do that work up there. We support the staff recommendations, I wish there were more shoulders, but I think the, there'll be some other people speaking about specific projects tonight, but we think the staff recommendations hit at very important issues, particularly 40th Street between Island Crest Way and 86th, the shoulder projects that are in it, although we wish they would move up, and that we continue to fund the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Kirk Griffin, I live at 7845 Southeast 73rd Place on Mercer Island, I've lived here for about 25 years. I'm also a member of Neighbors in Motion, NIM, and I reiterate the four points that Jim just mentioned as being our focus areas. I want to thank the city council and the engineering staff, with regard to the work they've done for the shoulder paving, I want to speak specifically to that. There's another half-mile that's being paved right now on West Mercer Way that would leave three or four other chunks of pavement that have not yet been done. When those three or four are done, then we would have virtually a complete shoulder around on the Mercers. I do hope that gets continued to be pushed forward and completed. A lot of us live on the south end of the island, and we know it's relatively, not relatively, it's often very dangerous on the south end, because there is no walking area on the side of the Mercers, the further south you go, and it also becomes much more difficult, because you have people walking dogs, or walking basically in the street. I think we've all come back driving cars and found people in the street, literally, because there's no place else to walk on the south end, so we really encourage the city to continue to complete the shoulder project. I also want to mention just briefly another of NIM's focuses, and that is on the north-south bike route, and specifically, one very large problem area is Southeast 40th. Our partner in crime, Jeff, will mention, talk more about that, but essentially between Island Crest Way and 88th is a very difficult area, it's where bikers need to go to access anything north to south. The current plan is to have that widened and provide either sharrows or a separate bike lane on 40th, and I think that's very critical and very important, that would address a very, very difficult, and at this point, dangerous portion of the north-south bike route, and I hope that that does continue to make it into the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Koontz, I'm also with the Neighbors in Motion Group, I live at 4234 East Mercer Way, just down the road. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you about the tip, it's always good to true-up every year, and that's helpful for us. I also want to thank the traffic engineering team, we've worked very closely with them over the past year, Ann, and Casey, and Clint, and Ross on sustainability, and it's just been super helpful, I think, to coordinate on a number of issues. I want to talk a little bit about, well, maybe two things. First, the Mercer Way project, which Jim mentioned, I think I'd just like to draw to your attention, we tend to think of that as a great, the shoulder project is a great thing for cyclists and pedestrians on the island, but I was reminded the other day that actually drivers appreciate that project a lot, too, that's something I don't think of, because I tend to be a cyclist, but we were at a meeting and we were presenting about how the city has done a great job on the shoulder project, and a couple of participants at the meeting came up afterwards and thanked me as drivers, because it just helps them navigate our roadway when there is that buffer zone for pedestrians and cyclists to bump into and cars can get around, so it was a different perspective than what I normally think about, but I think it's a good one. Second, just briefly, one of the programs that we don't really address in our tip proposal to you deals with the north-south route, and it's something that traffic engineering came to us a couple of weeks ago about, about a program that they were, or a project they were starting, which is really this section between 86th and Island Crest Way on 40th, and improvements they were talking about making, and they asked for our sort of cycling, pedestrian sort of thinking. You will know that that is a very highly-trafficked area, particularly by children, couple of schools, pool, boys and girls club, it deserves a lot of attention in terms of safety and bike facility and pedestrian facility. We're broadly in favor of what they're proposing, I think the details matter a lot, but improvements along that stretch would do a couple things. First of all, it's smack dab in the middle of two separate bike trails that the city has already invested in, but it's basically a missing link, and if you cast your mind's eye to Island Crest Way and 40th on the west side, the city's already invested in sharrows and bike trail on that roadway, but if you're going east to Island Crest Way, it essentially just stops right there. There's no direction, or sharrows, or indication what cyclists are supposed to do at that point. Similarly, on 86th, which runs north and south, there's no indication that you should take a left and head into town, there's no facility improvement, basically it just stops. So, we think it's an opportunity to fix that. Roads going, you know, nowhere, or basically roads going multiple places are much better than just a road that just sort of dead-ends, and so that would be helpful to everybody. Second.
I'll ask you to wrap up.
Okay. Second, I just think, or we all think, that the improvements that are being proposed would be much safer for children, much safer for cyclists, because it would get everybody an indication of where they need to be on the shared highway. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. Daniel Thompson, I live at 7265 North Mercer Way, I'm here to talk about the second reading of the appeals and permitting ordinance that's before you. I sent you all an email, and so I'll just try to address a couple of issues. The first issue is appeals and permitting procedural changes don't vest, the permits can apply to those immediately, so the DSGs come before you and suggested that we have a bifurcated system. The new rules that we're going to adopt would apply to new permits going forward, but the old ones would be, continue to be processed under our old permitting and appeals. I don't think that's a very good idea, and I sent you some reasons. One very good one is, we're changing our hours of construction. Right now, we allow construction seven days a week till 10:00 p.m., and that's going to apply to Sound Transit, and I just don't know that's going to be very good. But at the other point is, we've instituted these changes because the old rules were unfair, and they put a significant burden on the planning commission, on the appeals process. It just seems to me not to make sense to tell citizens that you will be processed under the unfair rules because of when the permit was filed. These are better rules for everyone, they don't favor one person or the other, and I think that you should reject that and say, no, when we adopt this, we'll go forward, it'll apply to other ones. The second one is you have tonight, is you're looking at what to do about the building permit. You know, this was remanded to the planning commission, but I see in the agenda packet, you're going to take a look at it. When you gave notice of the application, that was, that was the critical factor, because most permits, you get notice of the application, it's like the Crown Castle that we talked about. A citizen wants notice of the application so they can get involved. Under our new rules, you'll get 30 days' notice, that allows you to meet with the DSG, to have an expert review it, you're ready, so when the notice of decision comes in, you know, you're not all of a sudden blindsided and scrambling around. Most permits, you get a notice of application, and you submit something, you know, I live nearby and I have this comment, you become a party of record, and the DSG just automatically sends you a notice of the decision, because that, you're a party of record, you're one of the interested people, and then you have a right to appeal. I know you're looking at the notice of decision, a building permit's a little different, because it changes quite a bit, other than the other permits, but when, this is what I want to point out on the appeal that you're looking at. A city can't decide whether a citizen can appeal a permit, you always can, if you have notice and have, you know, can do it timely. All you can do is decide whether it goes to Superior Court or the hearing examiner, same on the building permit. It's the same analysis we had under the SEPA permits two weeks ago, it's better for everyone if it goes to the Seattle Hearing Examiner, I think, so that's the only provision I would ask you to take a look at. Thanks so much.
Welcome.
Thank you. Salim Nice, 5619 89th Avenue, Southeast. First, I wanted to thank you guys, I wanted to thank you for taking up the residential code rewrite, obviously a lot of stuff coming down the pike, a lot of important new changes, I thank the planning commission for their hard work on it, and DSG. I had a chance to go through and watch the video on what is essentially the second reading is occurring tonight on the appeals and the notices. I grappled with it, you guys obviously had a hard time getting through, what is the order, and what is the point of the notices and appeals, which title is this under, 17? Is it under 19? What are we really trying to do here? It's a huge first step to have notices for the residential permits. I went through a residential 60-40 permit on Mercer Island in 2013, it took many months to go through that process, and the house sat vacant, right? The neighbors would have had no clue that we were adding a second story and doing, you know, 40% demolition on that piece of property. That type of transparency and being able to have notice to the neighbors is truly an important first step. I think the second notice is important, not as important, I've been through some SEPA comments where I've been a party of record, and as the last speaker said, you get notice and you're going to receive updates from DSG. I do think that in residential, it's a little bit different, where the project could be substantially more improved by the time it gets to permit acceptance or a decision. So having the public be able to wait and be a party of record at the decision point, as opposed to the application point, makes a lot of sense to me, I would just consider it. I think more notice, more transparency is always a good thing. And then the last, of just being able to appeal to the Seattle Hearings Board, I think the burden, the cost burden for the citizens is lower, having an administrative hearing with administrative costs and burden of evidence is a better place, a better venue for a citizen to be, and then there is Superior Court after that, and there's appellate court after that. So I just think that you're taking the right steps, it's, you're at the second reading, and you've got an opportunity to really make that right before a bunch of new code change comes down the pike. We know that with all the new residential code changes, there's going to be issues. I know it was discussed almost as, you know, is this a gotcha for DSG, and is the point of having notice to put DSG on call to say, don't make a mistake? It's not about that, it's about complicated residential code, there's a lot of calculations that go into these things, and getting them right isn't always easy. We all know the old adage about, I got a Ford and it was built on a, you know, a Friday at 4 o'clock, it happens, people make mistakes, and so I don't think this is about gotchas, I think it's about, it's about process, it's about getting it right the first time, and not having to try and correct things after they're built. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, with that, I will close appearances, thank you. We're going to move to the consent calendar, we have payables, payroll, two sets of minutes, and two agenda bills, Island Crest Way resurfacing project, and first quarter 2017 financial status report. I pointed out to Julie and Chip that I think this is the first time, and Chip confirmed it, it's the first time we've seen a financial report on a consent calendar, and I, my comment was, that is a testament to how much faith we have in our finance director. He said it's a testament to how busy our schedule is, but maybe it's a little bit of both. You may if you choose. All right, so I'm looking for anything you want to pull, or a motion. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously, and I will take this moment to say again, feel a little bit like a broken record, Clint, great job, and to others who have worked with you on this, but under budget significantly on the Island Crest Way project, and on time as well, or on, under time, I think, as well, so, great work, yeah, thank you. All right, we move to first item of regular business, agenda bill 5301, I-90 Lost Mobility Status Report, back to our city manager, Julie Underwood.
Yes, Mayor and Council, if you don't mind, I'll stay seated, for the record, Julie Underwood, city manager, updating you on I-90, and like usual, a lot has happened over the last couple weeks. In fact, I will ask Carrie to- In fact, I will ask Carrie to really provide the litigation update. I think there are a couple of significant things that she'll mention is the city did file a motion, so she'll talk a little bit about that, and she'll also talk about the State Supreme Court review, our request, and where we are with that.
So, good evening. Carrie Sands, City Attorney. And as Julie said, today, the city filed a motion for preliminary injunction, and this is in follow-up to the city's initiated lawsuit claiming breach of contract of the historic 1976 agreement and 2004 amendment thereto. So in the motion filed today, it's been noted to be heard May 23rd, but that's a tentative date right now. We will have a scheduling conference with King County Superior Court Judge Beth Andrus this coming Wednesday, the 17th, to discuss when that date will be set with certainty. Right now, May 23rd is a placeholder date, if you will. But just giving a quick overview of the city's motion, again, this is directly tied to our breach of contract claims. And as an overview, the city is requesting that the court consider enjoining WashDOT from closing the I-90 center lanes and Sound Transit from commencing work there until they have complied with their contractual obligations pursuant to the 76 agreement and 2004 amendment, to meaningfully consult with the city, to reasonably and in good faith seek to reach concurrence with the city about the loss of mobility expected to occur and the measures, the mitigation measures that will be implemented to redress that loss. So by concurrence, what the city means by that is it requires more than a take it or leave it approach. So only earlier in April did we even get the mobility study and SEPA addendum released by Sound Transit, and only on April 28th did we get the underlying data to support that. So our traffic consultants have been working on a fast track, on a very expedited basis, to try to analyze that underlying data, and they have reached conclusions that are, of course, not surprisingly, counter to the conclusions reached by WashDOT and Sound Transit. Again, providing a very high-level overview of the difference in that conclusion regarding loss of mobility. The city's traffic experts have noted that the analysis done, commissioned by Sound Transit on behalf of WashDOT, failed to adequately analyze traffic diversion. So the quantity of vehicles and how they will be diverted from Island Crest Way to town center streets is significant. They've also failed to account for the unique characteristics of Mercer Island's streets and intersections. They failed to adequately quantify that diversion. They failed to properly evaluate the safety impacts that will created by such diversion, and they've engaged in some, what we believe is invalid offsetting of travel times and invalid offsetting of safety issues, focusing on the I-90 mainland and not focusing on the safety issues that will be created in the city's town center. So that's a high-level overview, and we do also ask the court to appoint a special master to help the parties reach agreement on mitigation measures. And we're hoping, of course, that that is successful. And then with regards to the two appeals that the council authorized, to remind everyone, one is centered on the shoreline substantial development permit issue, and the other is on the city's exercise of its land use authority pursuant to Title 19 in the context of the building permit. And with both of those, the city filed motions for accelerated direct discretionary review by the State Supreme Court. On an accelerated basis, the court has noted those to be heard, and those will be decided by June 1st. If either party, or any of the parties, requests oral argument, they must do so by May 23rd, and oral argument will likely be granted. And so what that means is by June 1, the State Supreme Court will decide whether or not they will, in fact, hear these cases, these appeals. And if they don't, they will instead be heard by Division 1 of the Court of Appeals. So that's the normal appellate body, and we're seeking to bypass that and go straight to the State Supreme Court. So that's where we're at with litigation.
Any questions on that?
I did want to mention, sorry, that we'll probably, in the next day, put a link on the city's website to the motion for preliminary injunction that was filed today. So if anybody wants to view that, we'll have a link there.
And we'll get that out also through our normal, usual means, MI Weekly, and post it on social media as well, on our front page of our website. Also, obviously, everyone is fully aware there is a concurrent track of negotiations, and so that continues to be pursued with a small group of council representatives as well as Sound Transit Board members. We're continuing to meet. I think, generally speaking, we feel we're making some progress. We're, there's an open-mindedness, there's, I think, a willingness to try to come up with a settlement, but we still have a ways to go. So, and when, so let me just, yeah, we're not quite there, and I, but I do think there is some promise. And so some of that is, includes what staff had negotiated back at the end of last year. So that term sheet, if you will, is still in play, but then, of course, there are other items being discussed by the elected officials. Also want to point out, I think, obviously, any agreement has to come back to this body. The three council representatives, as well as the board members, have made it very clear it's kind of one of our ground rules, guiding principles, is they are not the decision-making body, that anything that is, in fact, negotiated has to return back to the city council, has to return back to the Sound Transit Board. There is a deadline. I think folks are wondering, what's the point of the deadline? I think because we have a number of pressing things, like the closure of the center roadway, like our lawsuit, I think it's a deadline to really try to force us as best as we can to come up to some agreement, some settlement. And again, any agreement will come back before this body, the public will have a chance to see it, review it before any council action is taken. Any questions on that? Okay, I think the, I mentioned this last time, but I think we hadn't quite gotten a fully signed letter, and that is a letter going to the U.S. Department of Transportation seeking their support for grandfathering the Island Crest Way on-ramp for single-occupant So, let me backtrack. One of the guiding principles that the council had very early on is continuing to have access for our islanders to R-8A and HOV. I will say personally, you did not want to give up on R-8A and did not want to really let go of that. We've had some recent court decisions that I think have signaled that would be a challenge. I think also because we need to seek the support of our regional partners, seek the support of WashDOT to go and to US DOT to make the ask. It has been very, until very recently, that you have really come to really recognize that we do seek greater support in the region by preserving Island Crest Way for single-occupant vehicles. Again, you did not want to really let go of that. It is something that I think we all believe in, the 2004 agreement has been promised. But I think having been to the Superior Court and hearing the judge comment about how that might be a difficult hurdle, I think all things pointed in that direction. This was the path that I think got us to potentially, a path forward that would reduce the neighborhood and the town center impacts. If we can preserve Island Crest Way, I think we all agree that is our number-one top priority. So having said all that, it is still not within your control, it is still not within WashDOT's control. It has, it's making its way now that we have a letter signed by the governor, signed by the secretary, Sound Transit CEO, King County Executive, and of course, our delegation. I should note, there is also a second letter that recently also was signed by Congressman Smith and Reichert, which is basically the same letter, asking to preserve Island Crest Way again. So now that letter has made its way to the secretary, and we're doing all that we can to seek that support. I don't think we can say, at this point in time, that we've secured it, which is why, that's partly why we have a mailer going out to just alert the community that they should plan on the closure for Island Crest Way for single-occupant vehicles being on June 3rd. So, any questions on that? And of course, we want to thank, oh my gosh, Representative Cleverin has been instrumental in working with WashDOT, as we know, and Congressman Smith has been also very instrumental in working with the governor's office. So we want to really extend our gratitude to them.
Questions, Council? Hudson?
Julie, you know, as far as the letter that was signed by the city and other parties noted was not Bellevue or Seattle, can you elaborate on what's happening there?
Well, on Seattle, we think that is, we're continuing to pursue Seattle and feel there is support for Seattle, but at the time in which we needed to get the letter out, we hadn't quite secured it. We ran into some hiccups, if you will, at the city of Bellevue, and so unfortunately, that is not something on their agenda to be brought up until a later date. So that might be something we'll continue to pursue, but at this point, I think because of the June 3rd imminent closure, we really said, you know, it's time for us to get that letter out, make that ask, and move forward. So without those signatories.
But we're going to try to follow up with most cities.
Yes.
Just to add to that a little bit, the staff in Seattle were intending to approach the mayor today or tomorrow about this, and we're going to recommend that he sign it. So, or sign it, probably what will amount to a side letter, because at this point, the main letter is done. Bellevue's, as Julie points out, a little more complicated. They'd received some information that we wouldn't agree with, and that flavored their conversation in a way that certainly delayed their decision-making process and led us to the conclusion that we just had to move forward because time is so short in DC. The only other thing I would add is that I know our lobbyist is working very hard for us now in DC with the secretary's office, and as well, folks on the staff of the congressmen are as well, and others who are affiliated there. So there's a bit of a team push going on at this point to try to encourage the secretary's action in our favor. But there is absolutely no certainty that either she will act quickly or that she will act in our favor. That just remains to be seen. Wendy, you had something?
Julie, I wonder if you can just speak to the island line man, whatever's going on here the next week?
Yes, so thank you for that, because that is going to go out, and we're hoping it goes out by this weekend, early next week, but it's a four-page mailer alerting our community about the closure of the center roadway. Believe it or not, there are still some members of our community that are really unaware, so this is really to make more of our community members aware about that, and also aware about the temporary traffic improvements that Sound Transit will be making around our town center, around those on-ramps. So look forward to having that come out to our community. I think also it's really an attempt to explain kind of where we are on everything, because you have been dealing with this for years, and so I think now's the time to say, well, okay, you've been dealing with this for a long time. Where are we on litigation? Where are we on negotiations? Where are we on all of these things? So it's really meant to be a good overview for our residents on that. And it should go to every household and really every address on the island. All right. So we also are working with Sound Transit to actually install those traffic improvements around our town center. Those are outlined in the Agenda Bill, 77th Avenue Southeast and North Mercer Way, 76th Avenue Southeast on-ramp and North Mercer Way, and then restriping of Island Crest Way at I-90 ramps to improve travel times in the morning commute. So, oh, and one more, 8th Avenue, Island Crest Way, North Mercer Way. So there's going to be roughly four surveillance cameras installed to really give WashDOT some information around how these areas are performing. So look for that. We expect to have, they are really trying to time this so that it is installed before June 3rd. Let's see. We also wanted to note to our community that we provided in the Agenda Bill a parking study. We are projecting by 2030, we will need approximately 1,000 parking spaces. So this is data that we're certainly using with our Sound Transit negotiations, and so that's available for our community. And then I wanted to ask our Chief Holmes and Kirsten to provide a bit of a quick little update on community outreach. In particular, I've had a number of council members ask about how are we supporting our community with parking, and how are we supporting our community when, on June 3rd, they go out there? How are we handling that? So Chief?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Ed Holmes, your police chief. So I've had questions from several community members, from council member Graffs as well, about our plan, if you will, on this parking, and what are we going to do when this SOV, SOVs are cut off when South Bellevue Park and Ride closes? What is our plan? So I take this opportunity first to, again, just share our concerns that we had when we heard that this was coming, and to express, again, vigilance when you're walking or on a bike or in your vehicle. The interactions already are troubling enough, and if we add more vehicles going through the central business district, if they can't access westbound 90 from Island Crest Way, and if there's more vehicles coming from South Bellevue, it just puts more pressure in the town center. So just vigilance on that. It is a concern of ours. We've looked at maps, we've looked at parking plans, we've looked at Sound Transit's plans. We've met with citizens on the whole, regarding the whole topic of the Sound Transit project, and we've met with the north-end neighborhood, just north of the Park and Ride. We met with them last Thursday. The high-level takeaways from that meeting last Thursday with the north-end neighborhood is they like their residential parking zone, it's working for them. They were very concerned about spillover parking, added pressure in their neighborhood. We assured them that we will do our best to do extra-focused parking patrols in their neighborhood. We even talked about maybe adding some signs in the neighborhood to help make it even more clear to people that this is a restricted parking area. So again, I think the takeaways from that meeting were that the neighbors are very concerned about any impacts to their neighborhood with pressures from parking, and in turn, the city, and we had city engineering team there, as well as the police and our police support officer, we in turn reassured them we would do what we could to partner with them to help keep their neighborhood the same character that it is currently. Parking is limited. I mean, I'm not telling people something you don't know. Our options are very limited in what we can do. We can't just create a bunch of parking, but we can be vigilant in parking enforcement. And so we have extra officers on patrol, and Ormsby, our police support officer, is going to pay particular attention to the central business district, the town center, and to that north-end parking ride, parking neighborhood, just north of the Park and Ride. We will have extra officers on duty. Their primary focus is to make sure that traffic and pedestrians and bicyclists are safe. So again, primary focus is on safety, and if and where they can help with keeping- So again, primary focus is on safety, and if, and where they can help with keeping traffic flowing, they will do that to the best of their abilities. Yeah, I think back to Seafair, when the north end turns into a parking lot, they try their best to keep cars flowing. I think this may be one of those times when people initially have to learn that this is going to be a real challenge. I think about the parking, when that residential parking zone was first implemented, we did a lot of enforcement in that neighborhood, and pretty quickly, people learned that, okay, I got it, I'm not going to park there again. So I think initially, we'll have a lot of focused patrols, you'll see extra officers out there, you'll see people doing extra enforcement on parking, and making sure pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles are safe, and then beyond that, we'll see how things settle down. So that's from the police department where we're at with what we have to deal with right now. Kirsten, I don't know if you had more to add to that?
I'll move on to the meeting that we're planning with the businesses. Kirsten Taylor, Assistant City Manager.
Can I ask one question, the chief?
Sure.
I think the, there's, one of the things that we really don't fully understand yet is how much of the South Mercer, or South Bellevue Park and Ride is going to end up, users are going to end up coming to Mercer Island. So I think that hopefully you're going to supplement Officer Ormsby's effort on terms of parking enforcement, because one person cannot do this alone, is that correct?
Yes, we understand it absolutely, and in addition to parking, she does have other duties. So given that fact, our police officers, I mean, they can write parking tickets and do parking enforcement, and while Anna does that primarily for us, it isn't as though she does it exclusively. So certainly, I mean, our operations commander, Dave, is sitting here listening to this, he's aware of the concerns we have with parking, and absolutely, our officers can help in that effort too. Thanks for asking that.
And the other question I had, and I don't, I think we've raised this separately, we have the city permit, the permit parking system, which is in place on some roads, like on 80th Avenue and on 81st, it's, I guess the question is, is staff going to recommend any changes in that, to change it from 7 to 10 o'clock, for example, instead of 7 to 9, adding more streets to it, and something that will address what could be a large number of people coming in and potentially creating issues?
So we want to first have a conversation with the businesses and property owners and managers in the town center. We do have a meeting scheduled next Thursday with the help of the Chamber of Commerce, so that we can talk with those business and property owners to find out how the current street parking program is working from their perspective, and are there changes they would recommend, and also to introduce, or ask if there is additional parking that they don't feel would negatively adversely affect their businesses, kind of on the outer edges of the town center. So we'll have those discussions and get information before we make a recommendation. We also are going to ask our businesses to be the eyes and ears of the city, because we are concerned about the spillover parking, or the hide-and-ride parking that we anticipate from the closure of South Bellevue, with additional cars trying to just kind of, you know, slide into our town center neighborhood and park there when they should not. So we will want to have additional eyes and ears, helping us to identify places where that might be taking place. Also, I wanted to update you on another aspect of our community outreach.
Kirsten, why don't you for a minute? Dave gave out a question as well.
Just have a question for the chief. Knowing what you know today, don't mean to put you on the spot, do you anticipate that we end up having, catching up some of our north-end residents in that new parking enforcement? Because I know there is some degree of street parking there today, are you concerned about that at all?
If I understand your question correctly, you're asking about, are we going to be doing added enforcement in the north neighborhood?
As we talk about the enforcement around the Park and Ride, just north of the Park and Ride, where we anticipate the greatest volume being, given that that volume doesn't exist today, do we think that there are residents who are currently parking that will get caught up in that newly aggressive enforcement effort?
There may be. From what I heard last Thursday night, there are vehicles, sometimes regularly, that park in that residential parking zone that may not live there. One of the big benefits of that meeting, I think, among many benefits of coming together with the community and staff, was the community was linked up with Anna. So faced with a name, they got her number, same with Casey Nelson, so they got to meet personally the people that will help them see this through. So yes, there may be some residents, although I don't know if they are residents on the island, or they come off island, but there may be a few that might regularly push the limits a little bit by parking in there, they will learn very quickly not to do that anymore.
I think I would also point out, I'm not sure, chief, if you mentioned, that our street engineers are looking at beefing up the signage so that it's really clear where the, you know, permit parking only is allowed, so that's, that will at least give an opportunity for those, you know, residents who maybe have not noticed that it was a permit parking area to be forewarned of that.
Yeah, and we talked about both at the beginning of the neighborhood, and then throughout the neighborhood, when and where we need more signs to help with enforcement, we'll do that as well.
Kirsten, back to you.
Okay, and then I did want to also make a note, we've had questions about, when is Sound Transit going to come and have a meeting in our community, and I did want to let you and the community know that we have made many, many requests, but at this point, we don't have a date confirmed. They have told us they will come, but they are not able to give us a date as of yet. As soon as we do have that date, we will, you know, assist them in getting the word out to the community when that meeting will take place.
Last thing, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to say a quick thanks to Michelle Goldberg for organizing that neighborhood meeting last Thursday night. She and I talked, and then she was able to organize 23, I think it was, residents that showed up, so my hat's off to you, Michelle, thank you for doing that, it was very helpful.
Anything else? Council members, questions? Julie, anything else?
That's it, Mayor, that's all I have.
That's enough. All right, lots going on, we are at crunch time, you didn't talk about it, but everyone knows that new lines are out there on the freeway, and there would have been new lines out there westbound too, if not for the rain this past weekend, so that's now off until next weekend, I understand. All right, we will leave that issue and go to Agenda Bill 5303, Public Hearing and Approval of a Public Benefit Rating System Application for Pioneer Park Youth Club. Welcome, Evan, are we doing, you're going to do presentation first and then public hearing, how would you like to coordinate this?
Mayor, if I may, I have a brief public, or presentation for you before you open the public hearing, and then I'll turn it back over to the council.
Just for the information of the council, I'm very much involved in this PBRS application on behalf of Forterra. The conservation easement you see in the Agenda Bill is something I drafted for Forterra, and the PBRS application itself is something that I helped the applicant prepare for King County. I checked with Carrie about whether I needed to recuse myself, and she checked with the county, and concluded I don't have to recuse myself because it's a legislative matter, but I am wanting to disclose that I have had significant involvement in this matter.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mayor, of course, my name is Evan Maximum, I'm the Planning Manager for the city of Mercer Island. I had prepared a brief PowerPoint, which, for some reason, I can't get to show up on the screen at the moment, if you don't mind, I'll just push on ahead, you've had perhaps five slides.
If you have a dog.
Oh, fascinating. This is not, I'm afraid, related to the Pioneer Park, it's probably a more interesting, oh no, oh dear. Mayor, if I may, I'll just move ahead with introduction.
If you felt you needed to, we could jump to the next Agenda Bill and come back to you if you wanted time, we've got a lot on our agenda tonight.
You do, and I don't want to take too much of your time unnecessarily. The Public Benefit Rating System is probably a new item for the council to consider in this type of setting, there's some recent changes to state law related to how the Public Benefit Rating System authorization is achieved within a local jurisdiction. We are talking about the site in Pioneer Park, this is the youth club site that has the riding arena and the related facilities. It actually is already enrolled in the Public Benefit Rating System, which is a tax program that gives relief to different types of recreational facilities, in this case, of course, the private recreational facility that serves Mercer Island. Their current enrollment results in an award of a 50% tax reduction for the portion of the site that is enrolled. The applicant has proposed reducing the tax payment, if you will, by 90%, and that's what we're actually talking about here tonight. If the council elects not to authorize the Public Benefit Rating System for the site for tonight, they would remain at their 50% threshold.
This thing's working, if you want a full presentation now.
And if you'll bear with me for two seconds here, I think I can just get that presentation right up. And, I apologize, Mayor, I won't be long. And I do apologize, Mayor, for the brief delay there. The Pioneer Park Youth Club site is approximately 4.36 acres in area, we're only discussing really the southern portion of the site, so south of the house, south of the playground, does include the parking lot, it's about 3.41 acres in area. The proposal in front of the council tonight is really reflecting the additional easement language that was included in draft form in your packet. This would provide for the conservation easement, which is, the grantee there, of course, would be Forterra, and then a limited public access easement. With the recording of these two easements, this site would qualify for that 90% reduction in property taxes. The area in question is included in your packet, it's page 30, exhibit 4, I believe I have a graphic here on the screen, which is essentially the same graphic in your packet. This is the area in question, the area that's highlighted in red would be the area that would be subject to this tax reduction. And moving forward, Mr. Mayor, of course, unless there are questions from the council, I would suggest you have your public hearing, and then we would look for passage of a resolution supporting this program. This would set us up to take it to the county council before the end of June.
Thank you very much. Council, questions? All right, seeing none. We begin then, public hearing, same guidance as before, three minutes, begin by introducing yourself and giving your address, and we're open. Anyone? Please, if there's more than one, if folks can queue up, just so we can move briskly, we've got a ridiculously long agenda this evening, so welcome.
Hello, my name is Emma Sparrow, I live in Seattle, I grew up here until last year. I am the barn manager of the Mercer Island Saddle Club, which is in the property proposed tonight. Speaking from strictly a youth standpoint, which is the main purpose of this, our property in this hearing, this property has aided a lot of children growing up, be it at the dance school, or through the horses, which I'm mostly involved with, for over 50 years. It's been a place for kids to go and bond with their kids, learn from their adult mentors. I started as a kid there and progressed to being a teacher to other kids. I found three to four jobs from this property, I have learned the value of taking care of a property, and now I'm the barn manager, which consists of taking care of the property that the barn sits on. As for the tax easement, right now, we're kind of crippled by the increased taxes that we've had in the last few years. Our property is 50 years old, and so it has issues that a 50-year-old property does have, and from this, we are hoping to improve the property, have a little bit more wiggle room with our finances to make those improvements so that kids can continue to enjoy our open space. That's all I have to say on that matter. It's been a really important piece of property for me for the last 15 years, and I'd like to see it continue to help children in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Michelle Martin, 7427 91st Avenue, Southeast, Mercer Island, Washington. I have been a member of the Saddle Club, am a part-time member now, my daughter has quit riding there, but I still hang out there, even though I don't own a horse or ride a horse. What I find the Saddle Club to be is actually one of the few places where people can come and smell hay, smell horse manure, walk in the mud, be dirty, people actually like that, really, Dan, they do, I know it doesn't sound like it, but they do. Oh, it's, we've hosted several church groups to actually have Christmas nativity events in the barn, pull out the hay, and have late-night vigil kind of a thing in there, we have the preschool kids coming through all the time, and it's just surprising to be one of the things I like the most about, is being able to be there and welcome people that are just walking through, with grandkids, with kids from the school, with preschoolers, it's super open and friendly and not rural-driven, and, you know, people get to see what being around livestock is like, what being around these magnificent animals is like, and actually getting to see a little bit of country in the middle of the city. So I just hope that we can find a way to support it, because it definitely needs the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Tina Lanzinger, 4115 97th Avenue Southeast. So I have dual roles here, I'm involved in the Saddle Club, have been for a long time, I also was sitting on the Open Space Trust Conservatory for quite a while. I think ultimately, people are surprised that we're not part of the park system, a lot of people use our quadrant, in addition to the other three quadrants, to walk through, to enjoy the open space. I think that it builds in our community, like Michelle said, it offers everybody a little bit of a different taste to, not many, not many serving places have horses on there. So I would encourage the council to look at us as building on the south-end community, north-end obviously, but I think we get a lot of our foot traffic from people that are actually enjoying Pioneer Park and then stumble through our area, there's the kids that come and play in the preschool playgrounds on the weekends, and we are dedicated to making this piece of land be for the public long-term, which is why we're putting the conservation easement on it. So our hope is to keep another open space for islanders and off-islanders to enjoy and have a little bit of, like Michelle said, barn community type of feeling to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Ira Appleman, 9039 East Shorewood Drive. So I'm in favor of this, although I can't tell completely what it is with, from the materials, I'm in general in favor of it. 54 years ago, when I moved to the island, my friend had a horse, others had horses, it was sort of part of the rural character of the island, I don't want an island that's completely with horses, but I think it's nice to have a place that does have some. I'm hoping that they still have a connection with the new owners of the Stevenson property. Stevenson had horses, and now their horse is there, and I think the Saddle Club had a connection with that, and I think that was useful. I lived on the south end of the island, you know, for 50 years, and little kids would go see the horsies, and I think it was just, this is an important part of maintaining sort of the rural character, even though it's a small part of rural character, I think it does help maintain the character of the island, so I think that they do need help. I mean, nowadays, nonprofits would need help for something like this, and I don't think, I don't know from how much this is going to cost the city in terms of taxes, so I couldn't tell that from the Agenda Bill, but it didn't look like it was going to cost that much, so I'm for this and hope that we can maintain some of the rural character of the island when that opportunity comes up. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing, thank you, and Evan, we'll come back to you.
Pardon me, thank you, Mayor, I'm certainly available to answer any questions that the council may have. Really, the next step for the council will be to consider the resolution that's included as exhibit one in your packet, presuming the resolution is one that the councils moved to approve, the mayor and three, or pardon me, two other council members would need to sign an authorization to take this to the county council.
Questions? Hudson?
Just a couple of questions. Evan, on the conditions that are imposed, I guess, by King County? Evan, on the conditions that are imposed, I guess, by King County, they all seem relatively straightforward, but I guess I did have a question regarding that number eight, and I wasn't sure, you know, whether or not that seemed to be over-restrictive, or what does that really do?
Question number eight is related to the allowed access within the public space, pardon me, the open space area that's qualifying for the tax exemption. You'll note on the screen, I have a copy of the aerial photo that's in your packet. On the north end of that riding arena is a parking lot, which I understand is used by the public as they are using the facility. Item number eight, or condition number eight, of course, allows for motor vehicles within that parking lot for public access, public purpose. To your question, council member, the manner in which the Pioneer Youth Club is qualifying for this easement is by providing the public access easement. So, I spoke briefly with Megan Kim, the King County staff person representing the application on King County's behalf. We had modified this condition actually to specifically allow for motor vehicles at all within the easement, again, primarily for this public use. We were attempting to consider what other types of private use might be parking in that facility, and really couldn't come up with anything that would be appropriate and still retain that easement and the benefit that comes with it for the tax reduction. Last thing I'll mention, this specific modification to condition number eight was actually prompted by, I understand, the Pioneer Youth Club management. When they looked at the King County staff report, they had asked for some additional leniency in this regard.
Great. Thank you.
Sort of side question, Evan. Are there, I guess, in the context of doing this, are there other properties around Mercer Island that might fall into this kind of positive treatment going forward? Just to be sure if we do this, that, I mean, what's good here would obviously need to be good there, too. Are there other properties that?
I think there are probably other properties that would qualify. This is a really good tool when we're talking about preservation of essentially private recreation or open space areas. It does relieve the tax burden on these areas, especially if they're available, at least in limited terms, to the public. It is not the cure-all, if you will. Critical areas, for example, typically do not qualify for this kind of tax exemption. But as a tool that our Parks Department and DSG might use over time to assist in the preservation of public open space, I think this is a great tool.
Okay. Any other questions? And if not, I'd be looking for a motion. Wendy, you're the one.
I move to pass resolution number 1531, approving the proposed public benefit rating system, current use assessment for 3.41 acres of the Pioneer Park Youth Club property.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Evan, thank you very much for that. And, oh, and do we need to just, you said we need three signatures on this. Is there anything particularly?
If I may, pardon me, Mayor. I'll chase council members, if I may, after the close of the council hearing tonight. We can get it over the next few days.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. We move to Agenda Bill 5299, which is again a public hearing for interim zoning ordinance allowing light rail facilities as a permitted use within the I-90 Center roadway portion of the public institution zone. Carrie San, City Attorney.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. As stated in this agenda bill, this public hearing tonight pertains to the interim zoning ordinance passed by the council, ordinance number 17-05, that established an immediate six-month moratorium on the acceptance, processing, and approval of applications for any development within the I-90 right-of-way. And the follow-up ordinance passed by the council, 17C-10, which amended the, and actually extinguished by its terms the moratorium, to allow light rail facilities as a permitted use within the I-90 Center roadway and all other uses as a conditional use. And so, by its terms, again, the moratorium was extinguished by the follow-up ordinance, 17C-10. But this hearing tonight is required under state law, and its purpose is to get additional testimony to support or to further inform the council in these interim zoning regulations, again, that would allow light rail facilities as a permitted use within the I-90 Center roadway and all other light rail as a conditional use outside the Center roadway. So, if the council would like to open the public hearing, and if it is so inclined, the council may adopt additional findings of fact in support of the interim zoning ordinance at a future date, having considered the public testimony.
All right. So, we are again open as a public hearing. Same rules apply. Three minutes, please introduce yourself and give your address. Anyone? Ira.
Ira Appleman, 9039 East Shorewood Drive. I don't really get this. We adopted the, it seemed like a reasonable ordinance to begin with, where a standard feature of zoning is that, of our zoning, is that if it's not allowed in the zoning, then you can't do it. It has to be specifically allowed in the zoning. We don't allow, or we didn't allow transit stations in that P-zone. So, I don't, I find the whole thing very confusing, and I don't see why. It just seems like we're caving in to sound transit by allowing it. First of all, how could they possibly get a building permit if it's not allowed in the zone? It just seems like something's being covered up here. It's completely inconsistent. There shouldn't be a building permit, and if sound transit applies for something that isn't allowed in the zone, it's their problem. It's not the city council's problem. If somebody applies for a hotel in a residential district, it's not the city's problem. They can just say, well, you know, this doesn't apply, it's not allowed in this zone. So, I don't understand. It seems like we're caving in to sound transit for some reason. If it's because the court is telling us we have to, then that should be in the whereas's. If it's for some other reason, that should be in the whereas's, but it's not. And so, I don't understand why we would cave on this, since we all agreed that it was a great idea to have a moratorium until we could think through what having a transit center in this P-zone meant. Now, apparently, we're not going to think that through. We're just going to pass this, and I, as I said, I don't understand. It seems like staff may have made a mistake by approving some sort of building permit. There shouldn't be a building permit that's vested because you can't have that sort of a building in the P-zone under the current law. So, I'm sorry, sound transit applied for something that isn't allowed under our law. So, I don't understand why we should do this. If a court wants to order us to do it, then let them, but I don't see any order of the court for us to do it. I haven't read all the documents that are on the docket, but I just don't get it. I don't understand why we'd even consider something like this, since it's sound transit's problem. If, they should apply for a change in the P-zone, that's what always happens. Let them apply for a change in the P-zone to allow a transit station in the P-zone. I just don't, I don't get what's going on. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and Carrie, I'm going to come right back to you and ask you to try and elaborate on why we are where we are, so that Ira's question, which is, I think, a fair question, is answered for not just him, but everyone.
Sure. Well, if, I understood Mr. Appleman's testimony just now. It seems he's calling into question the preliminary findings of fact that are set forth in your packet. Again, this is Agenda Bill 5302, and I'm looking at exhibit one, page five, and this is in section four, and the findings are set forth in section four, A through D. And to Mr. Appleman's point, he is calling into question, why are we, as a city, going to be accepting the building permit for the sound transit Mercer Island station if we originally concluded that a light rail station was not a permitted use within the I-90 portion of the right-of-way? And we did initially impose a moratorium back in February in efforts to have our planning commission further study that issue, and then, in the meanwhile, based on court proceedings that remain ongoing and pending, I spoke earlier during the city manager's I-90 status update about an appeal that we have now pending, hopefully to be accepted for direct discretionary review by the State Supreme Court. But that appeal that's pending goes to the crux of this issue, the issue being whether or not the city can exercise its land use authority under Title 19 and thereby require sound transit to have to, you know, make certain concessions as far as mitigating measures and other conditions to use the I-90 Center roadway in particular in a way different from how it's historically been contemplated in our land use code. And that is going to be looked at, hopefully, by the State Supreme Court. That will be decided by June 1st, whether the State Supreme Court accepts direct review of that. But based on the testimony you heard from Mr. Appleman, we should perhaps add a finding to acknowledge that there was a decision from Judge Andrus, entered on April 21st, about this very issue. The decision had to do with whether it makes a difference that sound transit is the less see of Washdott in the Center roadway. So, Washdott, she, the judge determined, has plenary power within its own I-90 right-of-way. The distinction is that sound transit, as Washdott's less see, the city took the position they don't have the same power as Washdott with respect to that Center roadway, and that what makes a difference here is the fact of a leasing arrangement. And so, the city took the position that that lease makes a material difference in whether or not the city's land use authority under Title 19 applies or not. So, if the council is so inclined, we can expand on these preliminary findings of fact, or we can leave them just as they are. This is, in part, driven by the litigation that remains pending, so he is correct about that.
So, there was a lot there. I think the, if I could, and you'll just tell me if I'm completely wrong, but the short answer is that this reflects our legal ongoing actions and the back and forth that's going on between us, the courts, and sound transit, and ultimately, the staff's decision and council's support for making this move because it makes sense as part of our legal strategy at this time.
That's correct. In a nutshell, it makes sense at this time to have this public hearing and to have the interim regulation in place that allows light rail facilities in the I-90 Center roadway. That is what the judge ordered, and that is what's on appeal right now, but for the time being, that is necessary to comply with the judge's order.
Council members, questions? Comments? So, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with the ordinance written as it is. I don't, I don't believe it's necessary to add another whereas clause. I mean, we're appealing that decision. I don't think it's any reason to give it, yeah, let's back up. We made the decision to pass this ordinance, 17C-10, before she issued her decision, and we made that, we made that decision for the reasons that I think are well-known to the council. Those reasons haven't changed, and the fact that she subsequently issued a decision doesn't change the reasons why we adopted the ordinance. And so, I don't, I think it was the wrong decision she made, and even if it turns out that she gets reversed, I don't see us changing this ordinance, because one of our strongest, one of our necessary arguments before the Supreme Court, when it comes up on appeal, is the fact that we passed this ordinance, and it was not because by her ruling, this decision was made before she made her ruling, and we believe that in large part because we passed this ordinance, that's why her ruling was a mistake. So, I would encourage the council to not make any changes in the ordinance at this point.
Anyone else? Okay, and Carrie, to come back to you, there's no action required by, on the part of the council tonight, is what I'm seeing here after the public hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct. The council simply needed to conduct the public hearing.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right, so barring anything else, council, I'm going to move on to Agenda Bill 5294, public hearing and preview of the six-year transportation improvement program. Welcome, Patrick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, I'm Patrick Yamashita, your city engineer. The agenda bill before you is the six-year transportation improvement program preview My presentation tonight is a little briefer than in past years. There's about 10 slides, and part of the reason for its brevity is that this is sort of a business-as-usual TIP. There aren't any really significant, large issues that are contained in the TIP. But I'd like to start with a little bit of background. I know that most of you are pretty much TIP veterans, but for the benefit of the audience here and watching online, I just wanted to provide a little bit of background and some details and specific parts of our presentation here. The TIP is required to be updated every year by July 1st per RCW 3577. It's funded primarily from real estate excise tax, some gas tax, and a couple of new fees. The license plate tag, license plate fee, $20, that's the TBD, and then the newest is the traffic impact fee. That's a fee assessed against new development when they are building on vacant lots, undeveloped lots. And these newer fees help to fund the needs and some of the wants of staff, the public, and the city council. But over the last 10 years or so, it's been really difficult balancing revenues with the expenditures, and there's a variety of reasons, and I'll get into some of those a little bit later. Typically, in the, over the last, oh, six to eight years, the outer years, like years four, five, and six of the six-year TIP, they've gone negative. That means we're planning for projects without enough money in the bank, basically. The goal is to balance all six years, but there's sort of a tension because there's the need for reinvestment, but there are so many things that we need to do or want to do, and there's never enough money. It's kind of at home, like at home, you have a budget. There are things you want to do, but the budget says you can't do it, at least not everything. So, there are new facilities that we want. Some of them are related to capacity. Capacity like traffic signals, widening roads to add lanes, restriping to change the channelization to improve traffic flow. And then, there are safety-related improvements, some pedestrian and bicycle facilities, some traffic signal timing or re-channelization of roadway lanes. And so, there are some projects that might do both, capacity and safety. I just wanted to remind you, too, that the TIP is dynamic. The needs and issues change from year to year, and the TIP is updated every year. So, the TIP that you adopted last year may not be exactly what you adopt this year. You can always change things. We always reshuffle the deck, or maybe you always reshuffle the deck. So, a little overview. I refer to your agenda bill. It's 35 pages long. There are six exhibits. There's lots of information, lots of details. My intent is to stay pretty high-level for the presentation, and the program elements or categories are described in, on pages three and four of the agenda bill. The TIP priorities are established by a couple of things. It's primarily the comprehensive plan and some CIP budget policies. They essentially prioritize reinvestment of our existing infrastructure over constructing new facilities, and that's good stewardship. TIP funds are limited. The new TBD generates about $350,000 a year, which is a nice chunk of change. And then, the transportation impact fees, we're thinking will generate about $20,000 to $40,000 a year, but we've only had those in effect for about a year, so we don't really know. And then, in terms of grant funding, we have not been all that successful And then in terms of grant funding, we have not been all that successful over the years to get a lot of grants, at least large ones. Part of that is because Mercer Island, overall, relative to our surrounding cities, our traffic volumes are not that heavy. We have few, much fewer accidents, but we do have some grant opportunities for Safe Routes to School project. We had a Safe Routes to School project that was grant-funded many years ago, and our own mayor was the one that kind of waved the flag on that one. It was a very successful project. And for more information on grants, if you are interested, you can focus your attention on Exhibit 1, page 13. Just talks a little bit more about the history of grants. And we took a look at how we've spent money in the TIP over the last 10 years. And it looks like we've spent about 20% to 22% on average over the last 10 years on new projects. That's new roadway improvements, traffic signals, pedestrian signals, and pedestrian and bicycle facilities. So that's quite a bit. In terms of the agenda bill, it's really an annual update of the TIP, as I said before. It's required by RCW, and it primarily identifies new and changed projects from the previous TIP. There's lots of details, as I mentioned before, and I assume that you've read all or most of those exhibits and the agenda bill. And I also said that this is really a status quo TIP. We're proposing to maintain the existing infrastructure. That means chip seals and overlaying our existing roadways, build new facilities, or make modest improvements at a fiscally responsible pace, and in the end, trying to watch the bottom line, meaning no negative balances in our street fund. So because it's fairly status quo, I only have five more slides. Moving on to the project categories, first preservation, that's really maintaining what we have. The biggest thing that we do on Mercer Island for our residents as a whole is focusing on residential street preservation. That's where our residents see us working. We have about 58 miles of residential or neighborhood streets, and we repave those streets on about a 35-year cycle. It's not like a calendar or schedule where, once we get to 35 years, we're paving. We're assessing the condition of the roadways and making sure that we're repaving or chip sealing the right streets at the right time. But on average, we're seeing that we need to do that about every 35 years. And on average, we repave about a mile and a half a year. Then we have about two and a half miles in the town center. And then other arterial streets, about 26 miles, and that cycle is about 25 years. And then construction of new improvements, primarily new pedestrian and bicycle facilities. We try to improve those as much as we can within the funding that's available. And then roadway capacity. Over the last six or eight years, we've had to build some traffic signals, two in the town center, one on Southeast 40th, 86th. We've installed a couple of pedestrian signals on Island Crest Way, and we are going to be building another one on Island Crest Way in the next month or so. Then we have some unfunded projects. They were placed in the TIP last year and shown as unfunded. There were two pedestrian and bicycle facility projects. We wanted to get them into the TIP so that we would be able to apply for grants, but we weren't absolutely sure how necessary the projects were. So the first step was to get it into the TIP. Step two, monitor what pedestrians are doing. These are two projects, one on 92nd Avenue from the north end of the high school to 40th, and the other is the Madrona Crest Phase 2. We finished Madrona Crest Phase 1 last year. That was 86th Avenue from 40th, north about a block or so. So we've started the monitoring now, but we didn't feel like we had enough data to say, yes, let's go ahead, because it's a lot of money. But between now and the next TIP, we'll continue to do that monitoring and make a recommendation in the next TIP. So projects, let's look back real briefly. I know you can't see that map very clearly. You can't read the street names, but it essentially shows lots of colored lines. Those colored lines depict roadways that we have repaved since 1989. So almost 30 years of repaving streets, and it covers much of Mercer Island. And I show that just so you can see that every year, we're plugging away at our roadway system. If we don't do it every year, we'll be in big trouble eventually, and we don't want to do that. Now, some new facilities since 2002, the Mercer Way Shoulders projects. If you look at Exhibit 6, it's a graphic of Mercer Island, and it shows a couple of different colors. The green and the orange depict shoulders and paths that have been completed already on the Mercer Ways. And then if you look at the south end, there are some other colors that show either projects that are currently underway or have not been programmed in the TIP yet. But the gist of it is that if you take a look at the whole island, most of it is done. Now, looking ahead, Exhibit 4 is a graphical representation of what we're proposing for the TIP. Exhibit 3 is the spreadsheet that lists the projects. Exhibit 4 again is the map. And then Exhibit 5 provides written descriptions of every project. And again, most of it is maintaining what we have, and then the TIP also includes some new facilities. We are going to continue work on the Mercer Way roadside shoulders. We heard some testimony earlier tonight from several individuals from NIM. One of the projects or programs that they encouraged us to continue with and to actually complete is all the work on the Mercer Way roadside shoulders. And so we have added another shoulder project on West Mercer Way. We have, we will be completing an East Mercer Way shoulder project this year. We are nearly done with the first segment on West Mercer Way. I think in the next couple of weeks or so, depending on weather. So that's West Mercer Phase 1. This one will be West Mercer Phase 2. And then the East Mercer Way shoulder project that was included in the TIP last year is still in the TIP. Then in terms of other new facilities, safe routes to school, pedestrian bicycle facilities, and crosswalk improvements, sort of what we are trying to do most every year, or at least within the six-year program window. Public comments. We received a lot of public comments. And over the years, the comments evolved from people coming to the front counter at City Hall and writing letters to almost all coming through our website now, and then a few by email. We advertise the TIP process and public comment period through our city website, the Mercer Island Weekly, and our MI reporter. If you refer to Exhibit 2, there's a summary of all the comments, and most of them were related to pedestrian and bicycle facilities, things like the Mercer Way Shoulders, safe routes to school, PBF improvements for Southeast 40th Street, the corridor that we've been talking about for several years. And some of those comments related to 40th were related to providing a bike lane or bike facility between Island Crest Way and 86th Avenue, similar to what the NIMs folks were saying. And then also there, every year are lots of TIP, lots of issues that are not TIP-related, but they're transportation-related, either directly or indirectly, traffic operations, signage, visibility issues, vegetation trimming, parking. And so we handled those things outside of the TIP. Wanted to note a couple of noteworthy changes to the TIP, both new projects and then also some changes to existing projects. If you refer to Agenda Bill pages 4 through 7, they're contained right there and also shown in Exhibit 3. If you look at Exhibit 3, that's the spreadsheet that lists all the TIP projects. So new projects, these are primarily, were kind of created as a result of the pavement condition index that we did this last summer. It's basically looking at the condition of the pavement. And so we found that there's a section of North Mercer Way that is in need of overlay. We're looking at 2019 for that. Southeast 36th, basically in front of City Hall, from Gallagher Hill Road to East Mercer Way, that's proposed for a grind and overlay in 2023, so about six years out, but we wanted to get it on the plan. And then chip seals. 78th Avenue, this is an arterial street from Southeast 34th to Southeast 39th, programming it for 2018 with a variety of other chip seal locations that are already in the TIP. We try to do a lot of chip sealing in one year because it's hard to get the chip seal contractor to come out unless there's enough mileage or footage for him to come out and make it worth his while. And there are very few companies that do this work. And then North Mercer Way from 7450 to Roanoke in 2021, and then also a stretch on West Mercer Way, Southeast 72nd Street to the south end of the island, also in 2021. I wanted to mention that chip seals, they're a very cost-effective way of extending the life of our streets. Years ago, all we used to do were small patches and hot mix overlays. That's, that gets pretty expensive if the roadway, the full roadway doesn't need new asphalt. Clint, our street engineer, is really good at assessing the condition of our roadways, partly from the PCI and partly from his experience. And he's able to find streets that are starting to degrade, but they're not so bad that he's going to have to overlay in, in five years. He's able to find projects that are just starting to degrade. If he chip seals it, he can add at least 10 years to the life of the street at about a third of the cost of a hot mix overlay. So that's what we try to do to stretch our dollars. As I mentioned before, West Mercer Way roadside shoulders Phase 2, that's about from the 7400 block north to Southeast 70th Street. So that crosses the intersection of Southeast 72nd Street. It's continuation of the shoulder improvements that we're nearing completion of right now. This section has curves with some limited site distance. It also has some locations where we have open dishes directly adjacent to the roadway. And then finally, there are several street intersections, so just points of conflict. And again, Exhibit 6 shows that Mercer Way's map. It's in your exhibit, I'm sorry, it's in your agenda bill. And it's very helpful, at least for me, to see at a glance how much work has been done. And I'm not taking the credit for that. That's really Councilmember Grous, the other people on the council who have supported this at the policy level and the TIP level. But when, when you have projects in the TIP, you have to have someone that builds it, and that's our street engineer, Clint Morris. And he's done a really great job. He takes construction with a practical eye, so he knows where to spend the money, where he can cut corners and get a very good product. And so over the years, he's done a lot of work on the Mercer Ways and just great work, And then finally, East Link mitigation projects. City manager Underwood described kind of what's going on with the temporary improvements, where they are located. I wanted to mention that Sound Transit is paying the bill for all of those improvements. We have a placeholder in the TIP for East Link mitigation projects, but it just says TBD. And the reason for that is that we're in the middle of the litigation, we're in the middle of negotiations, and we have our traffic experts looking at the impacts, but we're not at a point to specify a lot of projects. But in the TIP next year, we will have projects identified. And then a couple of changes. Southeast 40th Street corridor, we had a study session with the council a couple of weeks ago, and to know how the assistant city engineer presented the results of that corridor analysis. And the bottom line was that the right turn lane that we had been proposing from Southeast 40th to southbound 86th didn't appear to be absolutely necessary at this point. And the city council told staff to remove that from the scope of the work at the same time and talked about some other improvements on 40th that she'd like to include that are more PBF-related. So we morphed the two separate, the east segment and west segment projects into one. We took out the right turn lane, and then we added a bike lane on the south side of the street in the eastbound direction going uphill from Island Crest Way to 86th. That's the missing link or the gap that the NIMs folks were talking about. In order to do that, I think that we're going to have to either eliminate the planting strip on the south side of the street or at least encroach into it. We also want to widen that south sidewalk a little bit to improve the walkability through there. As we widen that side of the street, we are proposing concrete curb and gutter. That's a vertical concrete curb, and that provides additional protection for the pedestrian since we're eliminating the planter strip. And that's being proposed for 2018. Island Crest Repaving from the 3100 block north to Southeast 27th, that was a 2017 project. We are deferring it one year to 2018. And then the Aubrey Davis Park I-90 Regional Trail Master Plan that was added to the TIP last year is still in the TIP, and we're showing it as Project D3 at a funding level of, I think it's $150,000 from the street fund.
But the project itself is fully funded, yes. It's just this funding of it is split. Julie?
For the.
For the Aubrey Davis Master Plan? It's fully funded, but the, but the source of funding within the city is coming from two departments, then with additional outdoor, outside funding.
That's correct. There is mostly city resources, and I think we largely want to kick that off immediately to have it align with the King County sewer project. I don't, I think maybe Francie can tell us how much money is actually dedicated to that. Yeah, I want to say.
Well, last year it was 350, with 50 going to some sort of consulting or design portion of it.
Yeah, the project, the original funding plan for the project was 150,000, actually coming from the beautification fund. And we had hoped to have 200,000 from Sound Transit or DOT. We now have still the 150 from beautification. We have 50,000 from King County. And then this additional 150 from the street fund would make up that difference. I think we still hope to get funding through the state in the next legislative cycle. We just didn't receive it this year, so that creates that placeholder for the gap.
Okay, TIP next steps. You're going to hold the public hearing tonight. I'm going to receive a little or a lot of feedback from the city council. And then we're scheduled for adoption on June 19th.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're to the public hearing then. All right, so folks, a third public hearing now and a chance for anybody who wishes to address the council on anything regarding the TIP. Same, same guidance as before. Introduce yourself, give us your address, and you have three minutes. So we're open. Anyone? Seeing none. All right, thank you very much. Feedback from council. So questions, wherever you want to go, council members, this is your chance.
Yeah, Patrick, I'm wondering if you can just comment on some of the public input. It's always great to be able to read through it and understand from an individual's perspective where they see some opportunity for improvement. And I have to say, there were one set of comments that really caught my attention, and that was 84th and 72nd and the crosswalk down by the middle school. Can you talk a little bit more about what actually has been happening down there and then what, what take the city has on that or the opportunity for any sort of safety enhancements?
I think I might have to defer to Ann for some of this, but we're in the process of looking at it, analyzing what's actually happening to see if there is a problem. The comment indicated that a crossing guard, I believe, was injured or, or there may be a near miss or were hit. But I don't know the details of what happened. They have since apparently moved that crossing guard to a different location, so there isn't a crossing guard there now. I don't know that that is the best thing to do for the long term if. I don't know that that is the best thing to do for the long term if kids and other people are crossing, but that's why we're taking a look at that.
So we, I think just to then satisfy the community that we're actually paying attention to this, we're looking at it because I think there were multiple comments and multiple sources of input on that to the extent that it makes me think that there's probably something real going on there. But you're in touch with those people and those parties?
Yes.
And I can report as a neighbor in that area that there is new fencing going up to try and send kids in the right direction when they're crossing 84th to get to or from the school. So I don't, I've seen posts, but I don't, haven't seen rails yet, don't know exactly what it's going to look like.
A few of the public comments were from a few of the PTAs on the island, and I think Casey has been in touch with some of the PTA folks, has had some dialogues, also has talked to the school district because some of the requests actually are more related to school district work. So we're just collaborating and working together to find solutions that are effective, and we don't want to double our effort. So if it's a school thing, then we work with them. If it's ours, then they work with us.
Thanks.
Okay, so Benson.
Can I just follow up? Sorry, follow up on that question, just a process question. So you're taking a look at that particular intersection. So depending on what you conclude as far as possible improvements, will you be coming back and making a proposal to the council to add that on to the next TIP? Or how does that work?
It kind of depends on what we find. If it's something that is simple and low cost or no cost to make an improvement, then we would implement that without bringing anything into the next TIP. If it's more capital in nature, then we would propose something in the following TIP.
And so when do you think you might complete your investigation or review of that particular intersection?
I will have to defer to Ann.
Good evening, council. For the record, Ann Tenella Howe, assistant city engineer. So for that particular location, we actually have already started looking at the intersection and then the area sidewalks leading into that area. Don't know how better to describe it. And we've actually already started to take some action. So part of the request was a sense that the sidewalk was too narrow for kids on bikes to be riding, for people to be walking side by side. So our rideaway team, this is a low-cost improvement, so our rideaway team has already made improvements to the back edge of the sidewalk that leads from the intersection of 72nd and 84th north towards the shopping center by adding gravel behind the back edge of that sidewalk to provide a wider, a wider surface to walk on. One of the other things that we've seen and that was brought to our attention was limited sightlines because of the vegetation on both of the corners. We've got mounds with a lot of bushy vegetation. We're trying to work with the school district on their corner. Our rideaway team is working on the city's corner to reduce those mounds, to maybe look at a different planting material so that we can open up sightlines so that drivers on 84th, when they are stopped at the stop sign, can see pedestrians approaching the intersection, they can see kids on bikes approaching the intersection. So those are the low-cost and very easily implemented improvements that we'd be looking at right away. If we were talking about some longer term or maybe the, a medium-range type of improvement, we have, part of the, part of the request, I think, was the curb ramps weren't inviting enough for someone on a bicycle to leave the sidewalk, cross at the crosswalk, and then kind of get back up on the opposite sidewalk. So they've asked, and actually, this request has come in a couple of different times. The request has been, can we do something with those ramps so that a kid on a bike can more easily negotiate the sidewalk to the street? So that would be a more medium-sized improvement, and depending on the magnitude of the project might result in us bringing that back to the council, or we may be able to take that, we may be able to address that through another project or funding source.
Okay, Dan.
So this will be my last TIP, but I'll go down in style, I guess. We're out in style. So I'm looking at the numbers, Patrick, and
Sure.
I think you probably know where I'm going to go on this thing, on Southeast 40th.
I have no idea.
Well, I'm going to go to the shoulders eventually, but I'm starting on 40th. The budget we passed a few months ago has the Southeast 40th East Leg project at $272,000 for 2018. The TIP that's in front of us has increased that to $789,000. So an increase of over $500,000 to fund, what I'm gathering is this bike trail or bike path from Island Crest Way to 86th and the curb that you're now wanting to put in on the south side of the street and the widened sidewalk. But I just want to make sure I understand this, that that is a $500,000 item that we've just added to this. I, to be honest with you, I was very proud of the fact that we were able to save all that money on the West Leg project, and to see it all of a sudden end up on the East Leg project is a little bit concerning.
Actually, what we have tried to do is combine the east and west legs separately, I think. Well, when you added
The West Leg was, see, what we did in the last budget, and I don't mean to cut you off, but you know, what Chip did and what we did in this is to break it up into two pieces so we could easily identify what was, you know, the part of the project which was the turn lane and the part of the project which was, we all agreed, or, because Wendy indicates some opposition to it, that we had, I thought we had all agreed back then that that one, we were, the East Leg, we were agreed on, but the West Leg was the one that by redoing the streetlights and whatever, we were able to avoid that. And so that was the, that's 914,000 that we tried to save. But the West Leg, the East Leg project was 344,000 in total, of which 72 is being spent this year. I'm just looking at Chip's budget, so I'm not making up these numbers, pulling the numbers from the budget we passed a few months ago.
So the primary change in scope is, as I described before, that West Leg, Island Crest to 86th on the south side of the street, curb and gutter, widening the road to accommodate a bike lane, slightly widening the south sidewalk from about Island Crest to 86th. And I think that's primarily it.
So that's a half million dollar item. I just, these are the numbers. Just trying to understand, because it's 780,162 compared to 272,000 in the budget.
What I don't have is the budget page in front of me. I only have numbers from the previous TIP.
Trust me, it's right here.
But looking at the previous TIP, the difference in cost, the reduction is about $478,000.
Well, I'm sorry. But, yeah, the reductions, but we were saving $900,000 by not putting in that turn lane. So that's the $500,000 difference.
So let me, so Dan, I'm just going to ask you a, I think staff needs to figure out how these numbers fit together, and then we can have the conversation about it. And I don't know whether, maybe it's time for us to take a break so you can all caucus around what the real numbers are. Help me out. How would you like, so that, we all need to be on the same page so that we can go forward, I think. And the question is, how do we get to the same page?
Do you want to caucus? A little bit. So let me, let me make a quick attempt at this one. So originally, the West Leg of the project was, yes, was the right turn lane and was also an amount of curb gutter sidewalk on the north side of the road from about a block's worth of sidewalk between approximately 85th and 86th on the north side of the road. So that was, that was the West Leg project for $914,000, design and construction. The East Leg was the curb gutter sidewalk on the north side of the road from 86th to 88th. That was $344,000, design and construction. And those are the numbers, I think, that Councilmember Grous is referring to that are part of the CIP budget. When we, when staff re-scoped to add the bike lane, what we are adding, so we took out, we removed the scope of a right turn lane, but we added the scope of a bike lane. So we have from Island Crest Way to 86th, two blocks, yeah, two blocks of bike lane. So we have two blocks of roadway widening of six feet plus two blocks of curb plus two blocks of sidewalk and the cost to design and construct that put into that project. So the number you're seeing, and the number that you're seeing in the TIP tonight is the combination of the newly scoped West Leg, design and construction for completing the sidewalk on the north side plus the bike lane and sidewalk on the south side, plus the East Leg, which is completing the sidewalk from 86th to 88th on the north side. And that's the $780,000, design and construction.
And I appreciate that. I think that, but that, which is, the question I was trying to ask, because it basically, it says that that work we're doing on the West Leg, which you've added, and I understand why you've added it, is about 500,000, $500,000 delta.
Correct. We had, yeah.
And so I just want to, we're only in questions now, so I'll just leave it at questions. So I just wanted to understand that that's what was going on.
Other questions?
So I'm going to help you out now and say, yes. So the East Leg, the north side of 86th to 88th is 350K, 340, whatever that number was, right? So
It should be 272, 272 in this, yeah, 340.
So I guess, so that was the project I wasn't sure we needed, given there's a perfectly great sidewalk on the other side of the street. So I'm going to raise that question, is that necessary? Or can we parcel out this project into three different numbers so it's easier to figure out apples and oranges?
Couple of things to answer your question. First is that we've been trying to monitor pedestrian activities, especially the kids from Northwood. We see kids walking on both sides of the street. And second is that many of us have spent most of our career making improvements on the Southeast 40th Street corridor, and same as Councilmember Grous on East Mercer Way. But you get to a point where it's not really effective to piecemeal things, and it would be nice if we could get it done and then move on to other very important projects. But Southeast 40th has the highest volume of any east-west arterial street on Mercer Island. It's a main corridor. It connects a lot of different facilities. And so there are people driving, there are people who want to ride their bikes, and there are a lot of pedestrians walking, young to old. And so it would be beneficial to have sidewalks on both sides.
And east side, that helps the bikes coming through that corridor as well, right? Because that'll be
The Island Crest to 86th?
Right.
Yes, there is no place for them to ride in the street.
Right, okay.
I'm sorry, I just, I'm curious. I'm familiar with on the other side of Island Crest Way. When you get to the corner of 86th and 40th on a bike coming up 40th, where do you go from there?
There is a painted shoulder area.
On 86th?
Oh, no, on 40th, east of 86th. You mean on 86th itself?
So I'm just saying, what's the, what are you connecting by filling in that bike area between?
So by adding a bike lane in the eastbound or uphill direction from Island Crest to 86th, once you get through that 86th Avenue intersection and you're still heading eastbound, there is a five-foot area outside of the roadway lane. That would be the continuation of a new bike lane to the west of 86th.
And that goes how far to Gallagher Hill?
That goes to, I think, to Gallagher.
All the way down.
Oh, all the way down to East Mercer Way. So past Gallagher.
Other questions? I mean, we're going to sort of, we need to move right into suggested changes, I think, seeing that nobody's asking questions. So Dan, I'm back to you with
Well, I mean, I'll throw it out to the council. As has been made clear several times during the presentations and by me over almost 18 years, I would like to, and in the public testament, I would like to see the shoulders, the East Mercer, West Mercer shoulders done sooner rather than later. And I appreciate that Patrick has moved another project to 2020 that was previously not there. But the next project after that doesn't happen until 2022, and it's still not finished at that point. So I, I'm cognizant of, you know, sure, I'd love to have a, add a bike lane for two blocks between Island Crest Way and 86th, but I would love to finish the shoulder project. And I would, instead of suddenly dropping that into the hopper when the shoulder projects have been out there for 15 years now, I just think from a timing standpoint, we should finish the projects we're working on. And as Patrick said, you know, you've spent a lot of time on 40th, I get that, but we've all spent a lot of time in the Mercers as well. And my guess is there's a lot more people who are biking on the Mercers or walking on the Mercers than walk on that two-block stretch between Island Crest Way and 86th. So I'm not minimizing the importance of that, but I think I would prefer setting this up so if we, the money we've saved, the $500,000, we instead use to accelerate the shoulder project, maybe move that 2022 project up to 2018, and then slot in this rest of the 40th project when, prioritize it when we can. But it's just, it seems a little bit strange that we, you know, as Patrick said, we always change a TIP, but to suddenly drop a, after we saved all this money on 40th, to suddenly drop in a half million dollar project and boom, that money could be used to do something to accelerate one of the Mercer phases, I would really like not to do that.
Okay, so there's a proposal on the table with that. Debbie, you want to speak to that?
I am going to speak to that. And, you know, I fully respect Dan's perspective on the shoulders. Both of these are really important, bike, pedestrian, and to the public comment, motor safety issues. And I, in my own mind, was sitting here wrestling, asking which one, in fact, I would support. I wouldn't say that this project has suddenly landed. It hasn't been sudden. The NIMS group and others have been talking about it for several years. I do think it would be interesting to go to them and ask them their opinion, which they would prioritize, which would be the shoulders or the 40th. And I suspect that question's being asked back there now. Fair enough. But what I feel about 40th is that that is one of the most critical intersections that we have in terms of bringing concentrated cars, kids, and bikes together. And goodness knows, it's going to get worse, just given everything that's happened with I-90. We've all experienced the cut through and the diversion of traffic, et cetera. So I think I'm going to, with full respect for your argument, I'm still going to be supporting the bike element, the bike shoulder that goes from Island Crest Way to 86th so that maybe we can just get off 40th and move on. But I just feel that there's too much of a general safety risk, as well as too many people who are coming through there on their bikes as part of the north-south path. But at the end of the day, I would be interested in what the NIMS group thinks if they had to make that decision.
Others on this? Everybody's speaking at once. I, I'm, well, we need to give staff direction as to how to land this. And so I'm looking for council to either support where Dan's suggesting we go, which is to is to reorder things, or to not, you know, on this. Benson, you want to?
You know, I think the deputy mayor was very eloquent. I, I think, you know, given what's going to happen in short order, we've already highlighted the fact that there are kids that are walking on South, on 40th, there's a lot of foot traffic there. And also the concern about what will happen with the closure of the center roadway and the increased diversion of traffic. I, I think that, to me, I would rather keep that one done. And, and I appreciate the, you know, I live on the ways, and so I, I appreciate that. And so, and hopefully we can try to accelerate it. But I think, as far as priorities go, I think completing southeast 40th makes a lot more sense to me at this point.
Okay. I think, so I was, said this before, but I think because it's our, our littlest residents that are caught up in that intersection, 40th seems to be a priority to me, if you have to choose between the two. But the Mercers, you know, they are dangerous on a bike, as, as many of us know from experience and would like to see that get done as well. The thing that I, I wanted to ask about 40th, it feels like an intersection we tinker with and tinker with and tinker with. And I'm wondering if in the coming months, if there's not a comprehensive final plan for that intersection? Because it feels like we, we continue to augment the plan and add some gravel here and talk about a bike lane there. And I wonder if there's a way we can take a, a complete look again, you know, my non-traffic engineer is showing through right now, if that's just my perception or because of the changes with Northwood and some of the additional traffic that we have, that's why it's been, you know, changed and sort of tinkered with so many times.
I was looking at Patrick.
As I was saying that, but I didn't really want you to respond. It's more of a reflection.
I was trying to read your face.
Sorry, I was just, wanted to look into your eyes while I was saying. Jeff?
Yeah, they're, they're both important and, you know, again, I agree, Dave, that we need a comprehensive look. Just driving over here on 40th, I don't have tons of experience on the shoulders. I wish we can find a way to do both, whether the levee lid lift, you know, discussion of capital projects includes one or the other that we don't do. But I came across on 40th, and there's so many cars there, coupled with everything else, I, I tilt in that direction.
Okay. Personally, I, I give Dan a ton of credit for the leadership he's shown on the, on the Mercer Ways. In fact, I just rode the loop a couple of days ago and made a point of going clockwise. I sometimes go counterclockwise, which means I don't get the benefit of the shoulders, but I went clockwise. And, and the shoulders are there for an awfully large extent of that ride and make a big difference. So there's, a lot of credit due. But in this case, I, I think we're, we're chunking along pretty well on that. And sorting out this 40th situation feels, staff's recommending it, it, it feels like it's hopefully going to get the whole problem sort of put to bed. It feels like a reasonable thing to get, get done. So I'm, I'm with, leave the plan alone. And it sounds like we're at a majority position to do that. Anyone else on this?
I would just ask if you could just solicit, as Debbie said, to solicit the opinion of NIMS before we come back for final and just get their comment on it, see if it.
Sure.
What they think.
All right, so other suggestions, changes, any?
To the whole thing.
To the whole thing. I'm back to the whole thing.
So it's a question. Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yes.
If we ever, Patrick, is there anywhere in there to address a, a final north-south bike facilitation? I mean, it gets talked about a lot. I know that's sort of the hottest topic for NIMS. With sound transit coming in, it seems like a tremendously logical investment of time. Can you give us maybe a, your two cents on where that discussion is?
Sure. Over the last several years, we've been trying to pick away at defining that north-south bike route. Most of that definition has been through signage and pavement marking. And we're in the process of enhancing some of those areas this year, if possible, with additional signage and pavement marking. Is that kind of where you were headed or?
It feels like we're, we're not quite connected all the way north to south and particularly around Pioneer Park on the west.
Island Crest Park?
Sorry, Island Crest Park.
Down to the Funny Farm, that, that area.
Get your mic.
Yeah, do you mind?
Yeah, please.
So it's, it's that area where you're just south of Island Crest Park and you're on the edge of the park itself. We've, I think we've probably talked about this a few times. You've got one side where the bollards were removed and it's paved. On the other side, you have the gravel. But there's a section there toward the south part of the park and until you get to that cut through to 84th. I think NIMS is interested in the extent to which we can have a more structured, regulated, and I hate to use the word paved, but I'll throw it out there, paved bike path that would cover that portion of it. There's the sense that that is a missing or a critical missing piece.
I remember that four, five, six years ago.
I, I might wade in here for just a minute.
Please do.
No, no, not that, because, but you're, you're into territory that we've spent some time on before and you should just be aware of, of the previous conversations to the extent that you might not be. So after the, the PBF was done, the pedestrian bike facilities plan, this idea of a north-south route was one of the, the things that emerged from that, is an important element of our plan. And we, we spent some time trying to figure out as a council how to particularly solve that piece of it from about Island Park Elementary, south. Because you, you have a sidewalk on the east side of the road, which unfortunately has a lot of street crossings and, and difficulty for cyclists particularly who come into those intersections, cars coming from the side streets can't see the cyclists. And I've actually seen a cyclist ride up onto a hood there, which is not a good place to be, no, no entry, but, but that's what can happen there. So we looked initially at, at putting the path through Island Crest Park. And, and I think Anne, you and I went and walked the trail there. The problem you run into is there's one significant ravine that would require a pretty lengthy bridge to, to traverse at a reasonably level, on a reasonably level topography. And the cost of that was, staff checked into the cost of it and it was quite high to do that. So then we came back from a practical perspective and said, we don't have much money, let's just improve the, the gravel, the compacted gravel trail on the west side of Island Crest Way. And it was sort of an interim, let's try that and see how it goes measure. I, I ride it on my road bike occasionally just to do it. It, it's dense enough that it works for that, but it's too windy to be a real road ride. But it, it made the situation a lot better than it was before. But into that, I mean, from my perspective, I'd certainly be happy to entertain ways to further improve it because it, it's without a doubt a hole in the, the north-south plan. It's just not clear whether you go back and look at the park and a lot of money. And there was also the question of, would there be an opposition group that would arise with the thought of putting a paved, a wider paved trail through that park? Yes, you'd go down Lansdowne Lane to, to do it. So, or do you put a, a wider paved trail right on the west side of, of Island Crest Way? So these are things that, if, you know, if there's a council appetite to go there, we could go there. It just, it, there's been some previous work and I just wanted you to be aware of it before you, before you, you kind of launch into it. But I, I share the sense that it's a hole. And particularly as a cyclist, if you're out in the street, there, there is a shoulder that's about that wide there, you know, it's bumps and nothing more. So it's a, it's a sketchy spot to ride. Yeah. So sorry to, sorry to kind of launch there, but.
It, it does help. I think, just to say though, I think that there is, at least on my part, that there's definitely interest in looking at that. If we're going to be encouraging people to find alternative modes of transportation and/or they choose alternative modes of transportation, be it recreation or to work, et cetera. I think, you know, maybe, I don't want to say that, that brilliance didn't occur then, but maybe we can bring some new thoughts and some new ideas, even if it's not a substantial change to the plan, it might even be incremental so that we, just make sure we just don't let it go.
Yeah, I agree with that. Patrick and Anne, you're, you're caucusing. I'm thinking I might have missed something, or are you thinking where to go from here? So feel free.
We're going to fight for this one. We're not, yeah, we are caucusing. So we are well aware of the, the concerns of NIM. We're, I guess we're sort of framing that piece south of the mailboxes as a missing link. It's still, it's a, we're not really quite sure what the right fix is, but we recognize that some, there are some things that should be done to enhance bicycle, pedestrian, mostly bicycle riding, south of the mailbox area. But we're not prepared at this point to come forward to the council with any, with any good ideas on what that scope should look like. So what I was just sharing with Patrick is, we actually were meeting with the NIM group on last Friday. And collectively, we sort of did a head nod and said, it would be good for us to spend a little time talking with them a little, you know, for a little bit longer and figure out what the best or one of a, what are the better solution might be, and then tee this up for the council in next year's TIP, so.
And I guess I would add just one more thing, that you, you have this funny jaw, so, so north of Island Park Elementary, you have a good situation in that 90th is a very quiet street by comparison. It really makes a lot of sense for us to have the cyclists have the option of being off on a, on a quieter side street rather than on the main, main arterial. Similarly, south of Island Park, if you could get over to 84th, it's a very quiet, it's a perfect street for cyclists. The problem is how do you get over there? Is, is there a way to get over there? And that takes you into this question of, do I send people through the park or not? And what, what are the implications of that?
One last thing. So a year or so ago, we actually did pay, we didn't pave, we, we, we fixed the trail. We connected the trail along 62nd between Island Crest and 84th. The portion that's just south of the Funny Farm, Stevenson's property, old property, that, the Parks Department repaired and did that in gravel. And then that connects into the neighborhood to the west, so onto a paved street. What we've been talking about internally is how can we get that gravel section paved in the next year or two? And we've talked with NIM again about that completion. And we've got some collective head nods from the group that that would make a lot of sense. So we're hopefully going to be doing that piece, if not this year, then next year.
Somebody over here was raising a hand and I ignored them, so forgive me for that. It's to you. And then back to Dave.
New topic?
Nope. All right.
This is an old topic. I'm on the old topic.
New topic? We could even.
Yeah, let's beat this one to death. One last thing, if the, if the council has an appetite for it, I think there are, there are national groups like Bikes Belong that will jump in and help, I think for free, with route planning, route optimization, and I think even grant identification. So maybe give you a free sack of money for some of that paving project or identify some people who will. So would, would love to have staff investigate some of that.
Free sacks of money.
Free sacks of money. Some, you know, some of the national expertise that may exist to be able to help us solve what's sort of been a long-term intractable problem for us.
All right, Wendy, your wish. On to the next thing. Do you have, what's your next thing?
Right-of-ways. So I live down East Mercer Way, lots of right-of-ways, lots of trees coming down, got trapped in the last snowstorm. I'm interested in knowing what the difference is between the DSG right-of-way inspections and the right-of-way tree assessment maintenance and plans. This is probably more of a question for Jason or not, or is there?
I can answer the part about the DSG right-of-way inspector.
Right.
That inspector inspects right-of-way construction permits and utility work and other things related to private development, franchise utilities, where the other one is assessment of trees in the right-of-way, I think focusing on East Mercer Way. But I'll have the expert answer that.
Yep, Patrick's correct. So you'll recall during the last budget cycle, we added a halftime arborist to the Public Works team. She started in February. She's been playing catch-up with the storm since we got hit with that great snowstorm followed by the wind and the trees. Everyone recalls that. But yeah, so she is focusing on East Mercer Way and the main arterials and doing a level one tree assessment and then trees that need additional follow-up work. They'll get it put on a, kind of a maintenance program that we then go back, reassess and re-inspect and we start documenting our trees.
So is this a drop in the bucket or is this awesome and going to make a lot of headway for us in that work or?
It's, it's very, very good. It's a more proactive way at managing our right-of-way trees. And so was desperately needed and we've started implementation. It is halftime. You'll recall that during the budget process, it was conversational whether or not we could share responsibilities with DSG and Parks. Roughly enough, it worked out that this employee is actually a halftime Parks employee and halftime Public Works employee. So it worked out for both worlds and it's a huge, 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 huge help for us.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, other TIP suggestions? Seeing none. Patrick, you think, you got off pretty easy in terms of council.
I heard. I heard.
I'm sure you feel that way.
So what I have is talked to NIMS about their preference between East Mercer Way shoulders and southeast 40th, or maybe the Mercer Way shoulders in general and southeast 40th. I'm not sure.
Maybe you can take the $300,000 that Clint saved in this last, in the thing on the consent calendar and put into the Mercers. I think that'd be a great idea, since you obviously didn't know about that when you, when you made up the plan. I think that'd be perfect.
Okay. Francis says it's in there already.
All right, Patrick and others, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
We're set on that for right now. Okay, council, we're at 8:30 almost. We've been going since 6:00. You want a break? All right, so break till 8:35 or reconvene at 8:35, seven minutes. So we are in recess. Seven minutes. A while.
I was taking the road. Yes. We're doing three rounds, right? Thanks, Anne.
Just to let you know. I don't know.
I have a question for you.
I know that we have, we, it's not really much. I don't know if you spoke to me about the history of 84th and 72nd. I'm wondering, unless it wasn't for you.
Why now? I think it's a race. Did it take the city employee to hit by a car? Did it actually? No, because it caused a birth of the city employee. Okay.
Sleepy bees.
I've watched your work.
Certainly not giving credit to somebody, someone else.
Yeah, no, I, the whole community is thinking for an answer for those things.
Little secondary, very curious, saying, oh, you know. So I was just curious to know. And I know that Debbie Burton, I know that you know, she was asking, maybe somebody to give us a call back, so I'm just wondering.
Do you, do you use that very such a spade?
Yeah, I live across the street. I've seen kids who over the cars. I've had neighbors call me, saying, I've seen them in their homes. Is there, I think it was filed, which I'm, it's a complaint. We've got, the city not reporting, saying, I've seen cars drive into the trees because it wasn't lit. So they were called up to stretch of 84th and then see the man who went to a tree. I've seen this last summer, people going to the fence. I saw some of the street being, I assume, power washing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, on 84th. I think you were referring to that. But I, I just assumed they'd be in the street and they see.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, so, yeah, not really.
You love her winner.
That could have been, you know, school construction.
Yeah, somewhere in the street, or trying to wash in the sidewalks.
Something really necessary.
And so, you know, kind of getting back to your, you know, that there's been a lot of this here for the last year.
So you know, it's one, you said, well, yeah, I didn't see you.
Yeah.
We've got one in the city, not reporting savings. I've seen cars drive into the trees because it wasn't lit. So they were calling to stretch of 84th and then see the man go into a tree. I've seen this last summer, people going to the fence. I saw some of the street being, I assume, well, washing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, on the sidewalk on 84th. I think you were referring to that. But I just assumed they'd be in the street and they see. Yeah. So, yeah, not really. That could have been school construction. Yeah, someone's in the street or trying to wash in the sidewalks. Something that would be necessary. And so, you know, kind of getting back to your, you know, that there's been a lot of this here for the last year. So.
What I, what I did was, yeah. 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 And I thought we had addressed her concerns. And honestly, it was a step before anything else until the PTA sent a letter and the variety of concerns. So.
But that's good. This is the PTA got your attention. It's, it's really something that something made of us. And so we had nothing against it. And at the time, the application, they had some things that could, and they were good on vegetation. Basically, a tree, it's not a problem. And then six months later, it's all good.
Good job. Part I heard.
I heard most of it. Are you up first or you up first?
Good job. Part I heard.
I heard most of it.
Are you up first or you up first?
Oh, you're, you're up first, but.
J.K.
Jason Kittner, in a suit.
That's right. She really won me. I'm gonna bail on her.
Sure?
Yeah. They should be fairly quick.
How are they?
Spinning the gavel there.
How many seconds?
Okay. Meeting will return to order. We go now to Agenda Bill 5300. Initiate street vacation process for a portion of Freeman Avenue. Jason Kittner.
Good evening. Thank you. We are here to talk about the vacation of a portion of Freeman Avenue, coming from something we've all been experiencing with the TIP to something that's, we haven't done a lot of here at Mercer Island. So just real quickly, orient everyone. Freeman Avenue is on the west side of Mercer Island, just north of Southeast 40th. It's tied in by West Mercer Way. Freeman Avenue serves five abutting property owners. It's a public roadway that turns into a private driveway. The private driveway then serves two property owners down on the waterfront. The background for Freeman Avenue is it's zoned as public right-of-way. As I talked about, it's all the way from West Mercer to Lake Washington. So it's a 60-foot width of right-of-way that includes Freeman Landing, which is an undeveloped street and park. Freeman Avenue is also home to our sewer pump station and existing stormwater utilities. It has a history of some landslide activities. In 1997, there was a minor landslide at the site and we actually went in and improved our stormwater infrastructure on the right-hand picture. Whoops. On the right-hand side in that right picture, you can see a shiny lineal object going up the hillside. That's actually the stormwater pipe that runs on top of the hillside. The green bin is sitting on a access to our sewer pump station. So our sewer pump station is below ground. You'll recognize the arbivideae, the trees at the top of the hill on the left and the bottom. That just shows the topography of the site and how steep it is out there. It's got a very severe steep and steep slope. The damage includes, the landslide that happened in February of 2016 includes both the public roadway and the private driveway. So the restoration would have to span across both properties, public and private. Here's a couple pictures of the damaged roadway. This is where they constructed the road. They built into the hillside, they call it a cut and fill. So they cut into the hillside, used the fill material to add the base to the lower side of the hill. And that's what's slipping away currently. Projected, this is about, they require about 120 lineal feet worth of some sort of soldier pile wall or tieback wall to repair this roadway. Again, the site's very steep. That's steep. There's an existing topography map. The estimated repair for this project from the city's perspective is very, very long and costly. We've been working with the private, with the property owners at Freeman Avenue since February of last year, working on some sort of resolution to this, to this challenge. And vacating a portion of Freeman Avenue allows an opportunity to find a resolution that's mutually beneficial to all parties involved. So Exhibit 1 of your agenda bill shows the proposed vacation area. It's approximately 10,000 square feet. The benefit here is for the property to the north of Freeman Avenue, they currently do not have vehicular access to their driveway. So vacating, the vacating the right-of-way would potentially add a future project for them where they can actually get vehicular access to it. This vacation area gets the city out of the Freeman Avenue landslide construction business where the repairs turns to complete private repair for the private driveway because again, it serves two property owners. And it, we will maintain vehicular access to all parties through a private agreement. The city will obtain the existing, will look to retain easements for all our sewer and stormwater infrastructure. And in addition, currently, as you saw the picture of the slope, our sewer crews, they, they don't have an access point to actually get to the pump station by land. And so out of this, the city will acquire an easement to actually use the staircase to the property owner to the north to access the pump station. A condition of the street vacation is that they do have to pay fair market value for the area to be vacated. So before you tonight, there's two ways to move forward with a street vacation. One is resident-driven. The other one is initiated by the city council. And so Resolution 1529, Exhibit 2 of your agenda bill, is a resolution to authorize the process, begin the process to initiate the street vacation. The, the code and the RCW also have a set of criteria that we have to meet. But by passing the resolution tonight, that sets those parameters in, in line. We start ticking those things off. So one of them is we have to comply, an inventory of all right-of-ways that for street ends or right-of-way that butt the same body of water, the street's being vacated, we have to conduct a study to determine if the street that's being vacated is suitable for use for other criteria outlined in the code and the RCW. We have to hold a public hearing. The code requires that we hold a public hearing at the Planning Commission and the City Council. So Resolution 1529 sets those public hearings for June 7th at the Planning Commission and June 19th here for the City Council. Following all of that work, we come back to you and provide an update and ask for either an ordinance that passed grants to the vacation, a motion to deny the vacation, or modify it in some way. So with that, staff's recommendation is to move forward with Resolution 1529, initiate the process to vacate the right-of-way and set the public candidates.
Council questions for Jason. Okay. Benson?
Jason, can you, can you elaborate on the valuation of the property that's to be vacated? Was that involved?
So it requires an appraisal of the property. It's 60 lineal feet of waterfront property, approximately 10,000 square feet in size. They use the appraisal standards to determine that appraised value. They do take into consideration the utility easements that will be kept on the property, but they use their appraisal standards to create that or determine that fair market value.
Dave?
I just want to make a quick comment and say thanks to Jason. I feel like this is an issue that we were super well-informed on and ultra-prepared. So when it comes up like this, really speaking for myself, you know, we know all the sides of the argument and just wanted to say that's the way to do it. Thanks.
No problem. And I will build on that just a little bit because from the public's perspective, this is the first time the public is seeing this. There has, there's been a very difficult dance that staff's had to do with a number of different neighbors with very different objectives and needs around this. And so staff has done a lot of work to try different avenues and see what, what was possible to get quotes for different ways of trying to solve this and, and presented a lot of information to the council in executive session because of the potential for litigation. So council has seen this before a number of times as in that venue because of the, the potential for litigation here. And it's, it really is credit to staff and to Jason to come up with this solution. And this is a way to solve a problem that was looking like it was going to be tremendously expensive for the city with very little benefit to the city. And there are those in the public, and rightfully so, who are very protective of our park, park lands and, and public spaces. This is a situation where the, I think we are well justified in, in moving forward in the way we're doing. But of course, there will be the, the opportunity for a public hearing process to, for the public to weigh in on this as we go forward, so.
And there is a study that will identify that as well. So it is, it is going to get fully vetted.
Yep. So those are my thoughts. Anything else? Nothing else? I'm looking for a motion.
I move to pass Resolution Number 1529, initiating proceedings for the vacation of a portion of Freeman Avenue Southeast and setting the public hearing dates.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jason, thank you very much.
Okay. Let's see, I've lost my front page here. We're going to move to Agenda Bill 5298, Appeals and Review Processes Code Amendments, second reading and hopefully adoption.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Scott Greenberg, your Development Services Group Director. I have, I think, four slides I'd like to go through, then I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. So for anybody seeing this the first time, the overarching goal of this proposed ordinance is to have more consistent and legally sustainable quasi-judicial land use decisions. So decisions, a lot of decisions that went to the Planning Commission would now go to the Hearing Examiner. And then land use appeals would go from Planning Commission and in a couple of cases, City Council and the Building Board of Appeals would also then go to Hearing Examiner with the possibility after that of somebody going to Superior Court under Lupa. The direction City Council gave us two weeks ago included incorporating all of the items on Exhibit 1 to your agenda bill. That's the, the chart that we looked at last week that wasn't part of your packet last week, except for building permit appeals. We'll come back to that. I also, at your direction, changed the public hearing notice time period from 15 days, which is what was recommended by the Planning Commission, to 30 days. So now notice of applications and notice of public hearings would all be consistent at 30 days. We often combine those together, so it wasn't a real issue for us. But even if they are separate, I don't think that's a big issue. We added a public notice, a notice of application for a new category of building permit called major single-family dwelling building permit. We also worked a little bit more on that definition with Councilmember Grous, who had proposed a definition, to make sure that definition clarified council's intent of what types of single-family building permits would be subject to this notice of application. Because as, as my staff was looking through it, I had them ask questions like, well, what about, what about a solar panel? That technically increases the height of the house. And that wasn't really the intent of this provision. So we clarified that a bit. We added what I'll call a vesting provision for current applications. Mr. Thompson spoke about this earlier this evening. There is a, applications do not vest process. So absent this clause in your ordinance, it's one of the last sections, I think it's Section 16 of the actual ordinance. Any application, complete building permit application, actually, let me rephrase that. Any complete application we have processing today would all of a sudden have to comply with all the provisions of this ordinance. So something that we would not issue public notice on today, we might have to stop the process where even if it's at the very end of the process and issue a public notice. We have several appeal applications currently under review. We'd have to stop and change maybe where those were heard and how they were processed. If we have any public hearings scheduled, we'd have to stop and notify those for 30 days. So it causes a lot of issues with dozens of permits that we'd have to all of a sudden go in and, and basically stop processing and figure out what we'd have to do differently for these permits. So there is a provision in Section, again, I think it's Section 16 toward the back of the ordinance that would basically say if, if the parties to that permit agreed to have the permit processed under this new ordinance, then we could do that. So for example, we've already had a discussion with an appellant and an applicant about changing their appeal hearing body from Planning Commission to Hearing Examiner, assuming this passes. Okay? So that gives us just some flexibility there. We added some additional edits for consistency. So as we began changing some of these other provisions, we noticed that there were additional provisions that needed to change for consistency. And then we did omit, just an error, omit in the ordinance, council's direction to change the SEPA appeal from Superior Court to Hearing Examiner. So one of the amendment, one of the amendment motions, I'll call it, that I sent to you earlier today would include adding that back into the ordinance. I will also say that there's an additional section related to SEPA appeals that we'll need to change. I'll show you that in a moment, but it's on Page 20 of the ordinance. We would need to have you accept the existing language in the code and simply change Planning Commission to Hearing Examiner. I'll show you that in a moment. Oops, wrong direction. The other thing the council asked us to do was to remand to Planning Commission the question of administrative appeals to building permits. So there were several issues I brought forth in the agenda bill that you could ask the Planning Commission to look at. And that is, that issue. earlier today would include adding that back into the ordinance. I will also say that there's an additional section related to SEPA appeals that we'll need to change. I'll show you that in a moment, but it's on Page 20 of the ordinance. We would need to have you accept the existing language in the code and simply change Planning Commission to Hearing Examiner. I'll show you that in a moment. Oops, wrong direction. The other thing the council asked us to do was to remand to Planning Commission the question of administrative appeals to building permits. So there were several issues I brought forth in the Agenda Bill that you could ask the Planning Commission to look at, and that is, that issue about appeals of building permits. Also, which building permits are subject to administrative appeals? Is it just the major single-family building permits? Or maybe the Planning Commission would want to recommend that other types of building permits be subject to appeal, such as non-residential building permits? What's the scope of the appeal would they would look at? Is it for appealing under the construction codes only or allow land use or zoning issues to be part of the appeal? Should we create a separate appealable land use action? Planning Commission even talked about creating a site plan review for single-family houses, and that would be appealable rather than the building permit. And then maybe the Planning Commission would also take a closer look at who could appeal, depending on answers to those other questions. We're not asking you to weigh in on the answers to these questions, but just whether you feel like these are appropriate questions for the Planning Commission to dive into. Then they would report back to you with the recommendations sometime later. Before I get to the resource requests, I do want to correct some things that we said at your last meeting regarding the number of cities that allowed appeals of building permits and the land use issues surrounding those building permits. We did some additional research and we did discover that there were cities that did allow appeal of land use issues around building permits, just as there are, as we said before, cities that don't allow it. So I, I think it just depends on which city you look at. And as I said in the email I sent out earlier today, I think that's, that's a piece of information for the council to consider. We are not suggesting that because, you know, it's not a scorecard of how many cities allow it and how many don't. I think it's just a piece of information for you to have. And that was never our intent to, to say, because no other city in the state did it, that we shouldn't do it. We were just trying to give you information. Regarding the resource request, the public notice for the major single-family building permit is going to take some additional staff resources. So I talked with my staff about this, and we figured that if this provision had been in place over the past three years, we would have averaged about 115 additional public notices per year. So that's, that's roughly a couple a week, maybe a little bit more than a few a week. We would average between five and six and a half hours per notice or per permit in additional staff work. And that's, part of that's preparing the notice and getting it mailed out and doing the mailing list and getting the public notice sign ready and that sort of thing. But another important part of it is what happens after the notice goes out? We, Mercer Island residents are very responsive to public notices, and we do get a lot of phone calls. We get people coming into the front counter. They want to talk to our staff about these applications, get their information. Sometimes it's more than one contact. A lot of times it's more than one contact per person. So we estimated that it would be an average of five to six and a half hours per permit that our staff would have to spend, that they're not spending today. That adds up to about 16 hours a week or about .4 FTE. The total cost of that is almost $42,000 at a, at a administrative level. And we were proposing, based on the 115 additional notices per year, a public notice fee of $250 or 325. The 325 would be for the new single-family homes that required notice, and the 250 would be for everything else that required, the other kinds of single family that would require a notice. I will mention that today, for all permits that require a notice, a notice board, we charge $50. And that's just the cost of the board and preparing the board and getting that all ready. So this is the, I'll say, sort of the amended motions, and I'll give you that extra SEPA one in a moment. I've got it on Word rather than PowerPoint. So the first motion would be to adopt the proposed ordinance. And then we've proposed two amendments. The first amendment would be to add back major single-family dwelling building permit, and the important consideration is to have that go at least as an interim measure to the Hearing Examiner. So while, while the Planning Commission is reviewing this question of appeals, this, if you passed it in the way that we're showing here, this would allow an appeal of a building permit to the Hearing Examiner. Okay? The second amendment, Amendment B, would change the appeal authority for SEPA threshold determinations from Superior Court to Hearing Examiner. And then Motion Number Two is the remand to Planning Commission. And then Motion Number Three is passing the resolution with the additional resource request. Now, the additional SEPA change, on Page 20 of Exhibit 2, there's a section, it's actually 1907-120T, Administrative Appeals. So this is for SEPA. And you see here, the Planning Commission's recommendation is that there's no administrative appeal for SEPA. And as I just said, staff would recommend that that be a Hearing Examiner appeal. Because of that, all of the language that's stricken out needs to be unstricken. So you basically be accepting the current code, this is all current code language. Then the only thing that would change would, right here where it says "appealable to the Planning Commission," would then have to read "appealable to the Hearing Examiner." Otherwise, there would be no change necessary to the existing code language. That was the original staff recommendation.
Just that section.
Sure. I know, I know. So the area, the language that's stricken out, that's in our current code today. So if I took the strikeout off of here, this would be current code, and it would say that a SEPA appeal would go to the Planning Commission. That's current code. All I'm asking is that that be changed, that you accept the, I'm not even sure you have to accept the original language, you are to reject the deletion of this. And then you would change Planning Commission to Hearing Examiner right here.
Just to be clear on that, if Ellie's going to be doing this, you'd also delete that first sentence that you added, there is no administrative appeal.
Oh, correct, correct.
So that has to come out.
And, and if it would help, counsel, I can modify this really quickly so you have exactly what you would be voting on.
I think that's okay. I mean, it sounds like we've, we've got that one figured out at this point. Thank you, Scott.
Okay. So that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. So let's start with questions. We're going to have to figure out how to sort of step through this, and both Dan and Scott have told me it's not going to be difficult, so I'm relying on their assessment of it, although it still feels a little bit mind-twisting to me. So let's, yeah, trust me. Things, things one should not do. All right. Questions for Scott? Wendy?
Wait in.
Questions?
Yes, questions. So the 250, 325 fee is going to cover 90% of the $41,000 salaries and benefits you're talking about for the new FTE?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I don't have a question.
I thought you weren't going to add an FTE.
I was just going to correct, yeah, I would just, it just took me a second to catch up to what you were asking. At this point, we're not proposing to add an FTE because we really don't know how many hours it's going to take. We're basing this on anecdotal evidence, you know, talking to my staff about how long you think it will take. So what we're willing to do is try, we'll do what we can with our existing staff. We will do it with our existing staff. And if we feel like we need to come back for additional resources in the future, we will do that.
Okay. So, but because we're going to make this change, staff have to put in 3.5 hours for every application because they have to send notice, right? So it's automatically an increase in workload?
It's an increase in workload, but I, again, I'm not saying we have extra capacity, like people are sitting around not doing anything. It just means other things will get pushed off slightly or delayed.
So it'll take more time to do everything they're already doing.
Slightly more time.
Okay.
Debbie?
So obviously, the cost, as you say, all of it is anecdotal. And all of it, or at least the time period that we're looking at, that constitutes anecdotal is probably one of the most intense construction times that the island has faced in recent history. The question being, do you anticipate the 116 permits per year swinging wildly? Or is this something that, based on, I mean, obviously, like you said, anecdotal information, that it is going to be pretty steady? I'm just wondering what kind of peaks and troughs we would have in terms of time demand.
Yeah, that's a good question. I, you know, what, it was really surprising to me that if you look on Page 4 of the Agenda Bill, the total number of permits were 110, 116, and 119, all pretty close together for the past three years. So obviously, if we go into some sort of a recession or a slowdown, I expect, I expect those numbers will diminish. But what we found during the recession was we actually got more applications for remodel and addition of existing single-family houses than new single-family houses. I didn't analyze back that far to see how many of those would have triggered notice, though.
Really, the, the fee thing is sort of the second agenda. There's two different ordinances. So I don't know if you want to do the first one first, and then the fee thing is really, the fee thing has nothing to do with the appeals. That is, the appeal is a separate fee that's already in there. So nothing, nothing we do with the, that only relates to notice, which was already the council decided last time. So.
Okay. So yeah, so let's try and deconstruct this into the specific questions we're going to try and ask. And so Scott, you've got a first motion here, which is to adopt the ordinance and repeal the chapter.
Right. Trying to pull that back up here.
And maybe, so I'm going to just throw a question in here, which is, I would like the council to wrestle a bit with the definition of a major single-family dwelling building permit, the top part of Page 3. And so I'm going to ask, Scott, is that appropriately addressed in, in the context of this first motion then, or does it come someplace else?
In the context of the first motion.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll pull it up here on the screen for you, too. Okay, I think you were referring to Page 3 of the Agenda Bill.
Top of Page 3 of the Agenda Bill, yes.
Okay. I'll actually, I'll, I'll pull it up here in the ordinance, just that's easier for me to do.
Okay.
But you're going to get the same thing here. I just have to find it. It's way down here. There we go. Yeah, got it.
Okay. So. Just give me a second. I just wanted to, this is different language here than it is in the other, or maybe it's not.
It, it should be the same language. The Agenda Bill just shows what changed from the last time you saw it.
Okay.
But this is what you'd be voting on.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm going to ask first, Scott, on 2B, a reduction in any existing side yard, I'm guessing that what's intended there, but I'm looking for staff's interpretation of it, is a reduction in the side yard setback, not the side yard itself.
Well, I would interpret that as meaning the side yard. So if your house, so, and again, side yard setbacks will probably change with the residential development standards, but let's say that the minimum side yard setback on a particular side of a house is five feet.
Yes.
That's the required setback, but the house is actually set back 14 feet? I believe the way we would read this is if that setback went from 14 feet to nine feet, so somebody added five feet onto the side of their house, that in and of itself would trigger a public notice.
So where I'm going is, I think you want the word setback in there, because otherwise, if I have my house set back 10 feet, but then my house jogs in to 20 feet and goes across, and I decide I want to move that part, the 20-foot-out part, out somewhat, I have changed my side yard, but I have not changed my side yard setback.
No, the setback, no, the way the code works, the side yard is the, the distance between the structure and the property boundary.
So the phrase "side yard" is defined as a distance.
Yeah.
It's not defined as a area.
The setback is, the setback is the five feet or the combination of two that equal 15 feet. The code says you have to have side yards which are at least total 15 feet, at least of which one has to be at least five feet, or both have to be at least five feet. So, so the word "side yard" is actually the way it works in the, in the code. I think that wording is right.
And Scott's nodding his head. So I will let that one go, although it still feels kind of funny to me. The second thing is that I'm, I'm looking for council's opinion. So I, I get and subscribe to this idea that my neighbor changes his building height significantly. I want to know about that. That's going to affect me. My neighbor in Item B, 2B, changes how close he is to my fence. I want to know about that. But I'm, I'm more, I'm questioning C and D. And the question becomes, if my neighbor changes around the other side of his house, puts in a patio, do I really care about that? And do I, as the person doing it, really want to pay the additional $300 fee for putting in that patio so that I can alert this neighbor who probably has no idea that I'm even doing it because it's not even in the vicinity? It's not sort of affecting the neighbor? So the place I'm going is, is there a council appetite for dropping Items C and D off of this list and reducing this more to just the things that more immediately would impact a, a neighbor? So I put that question to the council.
I would agree with that.
I'd like to hear from Scott what the logic is behind it, just to make sure that.
But it's Dan's logic.
You'll have to ask the person sitting next to you about that.
I redirect my question.
There are, there are various factors which, which are the critical land use issues that come up in any kind of development. Height is obviously one, setbacks or side yards is one of them, but also the issue of the size of the house and what the gross, we, we have a code which says houses can only be a certain size based on gross floor area. That's what our code says. We also have a code which says, right now, that you can't have more than a certain amount of impervious surface. So if, if you have, and when, so if you're building a new house, those are the factors that Scott looks at, that Scott's staff looks at. So now you've got to remodel, and those same factors are, are still the same factors. So if someone is, is turning their, their house, say they, say they're sticking within the same.
Footprint.
Yeah, footprint, but they're going up, or they're, well, if they're going up, that has to be caught here. But if they're doing something that else which would increase the gross floor area, so they don't go up, but then they don't, and they don't mess with the side yard setbacks, they go towards the rear yard, or they come towards the front yard, then, and you get a much larger house all of a sudden, then there is a question of gross floor area, and that's one of the factors we look at to control the size of houses. And the same thing on impervious surface, which obviously then impacts the amount of pavement on the, on the property and the amount of trees or vegetation. I mean, these are just, these are the types of things which determine, which the Planning Commission and doing all their work now, that's how they define how to make sure a new house or any house stays within the character of the neighborhood. And these are the four factors that are relevant to that. So that's why they're all here. Now, we can argue about whether it should be 500 square feet or 1,000 square feet or 100 square feet or 200 square feet. That's a perfectly valid thing, but if you want to basically address the things that impact the land use issues in determining the size and the appropriate size of a house, these are the four items. That simple.
Pardon? Maybe?
All right, Carrie.
Can I add one more thing, Carrie? Sorry, real quick. I think an important point is one of the changes that we made to this definition between your last meeting and today. And if you read number two, it's any change to a single-family dwelling that requires a building permit and results in the following. So the patio example is a good example, but if a patio required a building permit or was part of a project that had a building permit, then that would trigger the notice. But if you have an existing house, and you just want to go out and pour a 10 by 10 patio, you don't require a building permit for that, and therefore, that would not require a notice. So that's just a minor clarification.
Carrie.
I just wanted to add on page three of this Agenda Bill, under the heading "Remand to Planning Commission." And I'm now looking near the bottom of the page. It says, "On remand, staff recommends the Planning Commission consider the following issues under Title 19." And you'll see the second bullet point says, "The definition of major single-family dwelling building permit and the triggers for such a permit." And by triggers, we were referring to these items on the screen right now, items one and two, and within two, A through D. And so if council wants to give even more direction to the Planning Commission on remand about what specifically to look at in this definition, this would be a really appropriate time, and it could be very helpful for the Planning Commission.
Okay. So I think... Well, what I hear there is it's okay, or you're supporting the concept of, let's sort of have a council hash out of this, figure out where the council kind of is, but use that maybe as direction back to Planning Commission rather than within the change that we're doing right now, or both?
If council has an appetite to continue to hash it out, great. If they'd rather punt it to the Planning Commission and give them some more parameters to consider, then that's an alternative as well. So it's up to the council how you want to handle it.
Let's understand. I mean, there's an issue of, if we're going to undo everything we did two weeks ago, then that's the direction you're about to head. I hope you don't head in that direction. You know, what I think staff is proposing to... I thought staff was proposing to do was to pass this and even pass the appeal, add the appeal provision in, and then remand it back to the plan... Not remand it, but basically ask the Planning Commission to put it on their work plan at some point down the road. You know, they've got critical areas, which has a higher priority than this, I would suggest. But, and so I think that it may come up later into 2017, it may be on the 2018 work plan, but this would be one item that would be in the parking lot for them to deal with. But I would hope that there is not any intention to backtrack where we were two weeks ago on the notice section. And I think staff is basically, is my understanding, talking with Scott, he's perfectly satisfied with adding the administrative appeal until such time as the Planning Commission wants to look at it again, or can look at it again.
So speaking for myself, my intent was not to unwind lots of things. I was trying to take this moment to perhaps simplify the new and different piece of this. I'm perfectly fine with the idea of have Planning Commission sort it out, but I'd want to do at least let the council hear the benefit of my wise thinking on this and see what others thought, so...
So I'll just retract what I said previously, because Scott, thanks for the clarification on the requirement of the building permit. That somehow slipped my lizard brain. So it makes sense to me now that they fall under a building permit requirement before they trigger it.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm happy to have this die if there's not support for it. I'm not going to fall on my sword for this, but I wanted to put it out there. Okay.
You know, I don't remember delving into this level of detail, and it feels like it's a little further than we had talked about a few weeks ago. So I would be in favor of sending it back to the Planning Commission, especially since it says "remand to Planning Commission." And part of that is, this is a major single-family dwelling. Is there such a thing as a minor single-family dwelling permit?
No.
So what are we doing with "major"? I mean, it just seems like a lot of...
Yeah. It was a way, instead of just saying all, you know, we could have started with, "All building permits require a public notice." And now you're talking, you know, 1,000 or more permits. And that wasn't the intent. So, you know, I'll turn it back to Councilmember Grous, who came up with the proposal, had... This is an attempt to try to narrow the scope of what requires a notice to just the, I'll say, the most critical or most important things. So that's why there's no minor single-family dwelling building permit, because that wouldn't... There would be no standards or requirements associated with a minor permit.
No land use standard.
No land use, yeah.
And this definition, different, with some tweaks in it, was in what we talked about two weeks ago. So this is not new. And Scott has tweaked it to, like, add the language on building permit and add the language on height. So Scott made changes, which I thought made a lot of sense.
Okay. So I would be curious if anything else... So I'm going to go for a motion here, unless somebody else has got something significant, and we're going to just try and move this forward. So I'm at the top of this page. Before you go motion, can we... Do we feel like we wrestled the fee to the ground, the notification?
That's the next Agenda Bill.
Okay. Then we won't talk about that.
Next motion.
Next motion.
Future motion.
I like to do my motions all at once. So anyone for what amounts to, it's called labeled motion one here?
I...
It's the same on this sheet or in the Agenda Bill, right?
Yeah. Motion one is the same where it changes is the two amendments.
Yep. Okay.
Well, I would move the adoption of ordinance number 17C-12, amending Mercer Island City Code, titles 3, 15, 17, and 19, and repealing Chapter 3228 MICC regarding Development Permit Appeals, Procedures, and Actions with the following two additional changes. To move to add the text that's there, the following to Section 10 of Ordinance Number 17C-12, MICC 191501OE, ministerial actions, and I won't try to read that, but you all know it, together with changing the appeal authority for SEPA threshold determinations in Section 10 of Ordinance Number 1712, 191501OE, administrative actions from Superior Court to Hearing Examiner, and Section 19.07120T, as described by Scott.
Second.
Going to pause and let staff digest for a moment.
I think that's... Yes, that does it.
Captures all three?
Yes. I was just pulling that last one up in case anybody needed to see it again.
Ellie, are you...
Yeah, I'm just trying to catch up, because I had them separated out.
Yeah. Okay, while she's doing that, the discussion. Okay. Go for it, if you want.
So while you're typing over there. So Scott, I was told by somebody that when we approved this notice of application, we were also by default noticing a decision as well? Is that true or false?
No, that's not true.
That's false.
That's not true. The council decided, well, council's direction from the last meeting was not to do a notice of decision. Right.
Yeah, I was told that that was still kind of erroneous, because it automatically, one triggers the other automatically.
It...
Well, if I can clarify...
It does not.
I think there was some question. The sense that I got was that if we noticed the permit and somebody then went on the record, they would then be included in the decision. Is that...
Let me...
The clarifications. In other words, if you chime in, once you find out that there's a building permit that's being applied for, you become part of the record, and therefore, you would be notified of all subsequent decisions.
I just want... I'm looking back at the ordinance just to make sure that I'm going to give you a correct answer on that. So in this instance, with the building permit, we would not be issuing a notice of decision specifically. The notice of... The notice... How do I put this? The official notice would be the issuance, would be the permit itself. We would not necessarily mail something to all the parties of record, although we could. I think just, most of the time, we get comments in via email these days. Very few letters actually get sent. So we could easily just email people and just say, "By the way, we've issued the permit."
It's not required.
It's not required. I think we would do that just out of courtesy to people and good customer service.
Ellie, how are you doing? All right. She's given us a thumbs up. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. You've got second item here. Is it the same from one page to the other?
Yeah, second and third items are identical to what's in your Agenda Bill.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion. Numbered number two.
I'd make a motion, but it won't be exactly like this.
So quick, somebody else make the motion.
No, I would move to ask the Planning Commission to include on their next work plan the issue of building permit appeals focusing on the list of issues on page two of Agenda Bill 5298. If someone seconds it, I'll explain. So I don't... The word "remand," to me, suggests that that's when you don't make a decision, so therefore, you remand it to the, to somebody else. Since we just made a decision, the word "remand" is not an appropriate word to use in this situation, and instead, you're just telling them to put it on their work plan. So that's all I'm saying.
I think that's fine. It's the same, gives you the same outcome.
Okay. All right, moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are over to the public notice fee motion. Jeff?
Scott. Passed resolution, I moved passed Resolution Number 1530, amending development and construction permit fees to add a public notice fee that can be applied on a case-by-case basis for major single-family dwelling building permit applications that require a notice of application.
Moved in second. Discussion. Jeff, you want to go? You get to go first if you want, since you made the motion.
Well, I think especially in the way that it's now been put into place, which is fees are paying for fees, but he doesn't have to add staff. Seems like an efficient way to go.
Anyone else? So I would be against this, or be not in favor of this. I don't believe we do any fees for any other notification process, do we?
Not specifically, but they've been incorporated into the overall fee. So if we have a conditional use permit fee of, I don't even know what it is, a few thousand dollars, whatever, we've considered the cost of doing the public notice and responding to citizens and everything in that fee. Whereas with building permit fees, we have not.
Yeah.
So another way of doing this is, we could have come back to you with an amendment to our building fees that would have increased them all by a few hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think it's more efficient to do it this way.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess, given that, I probably would not be in favor of this and would wait to see what the actual volume of activity from staff is before we move to compensate for that activity. Wendy?
So, yeah, so my follow-up question was, you said we have a staff that can sort of absorb this activity for a while until we see how it goes. And so my question is, can we wait to implement these fees until we see what kind of impact it has on our staff?
That... We can. I'm just trying to follow the council policy of having sort of growth pay for growth, but that's your policy decision.
Then my follow-up to your answer is, what is the fee for a building permit? I know they're quite high, and all the other fees that kind of go with processing.
It's all based on valuation, and there's all kinds of different components, so I can't give you a single answer to that.
But we might have some capacity in staff to kind of see how this goes, based on the fees we already collect.
Yeah, we can free up... What we would be doing is having an administrative-level person, permit coordinator-level person, doing all of this notification, and would even take over notification duties that some of our planners are doing now, which frees up some planner's time, the more technical time, to work with people who come in as a result of the notice who want to talk about the project. So it's sort of shifting resources, shifting some work from professional staff to technical staff, and then also having the technical staff do more than she's doing right now.
So my final question is, how hard is that to try to parcel out all the activities to finally get an analysis at the end of the day of what this impact is?
It's easy. We would just, we would just put another line item on our timesheets. Yeah, and we could track that fairly easily.
Debbie?
Well, so it's interesting, because what I'm hearing is that in the existing, in the existing fee structure, we've done these cost of service assessments, and I think we've done two of them over the last four years, and we look at the level of recovery, et cetera. Because we're bringing this one in as a function of a new service, which is permitting or noticing at application, then we're sort of in this temporary place where we have to have this specific line item cost or charge of $325 or $250. Would it be your intent, when we do our next cost of service assessment, to bring this back in, sort of fold in these two costs into the building permitting fee, so that they're not quite standing out in such a glaring way? Is that your long-term intent?
We could do that. I mean, either... I just wanted to be a little bit more transparent about why there is an additional cost, which is why we didn't bring back just an increase in the building permit fees.
To make it very intentional.
Well, right, because some building permits are going to require the notice and others won't. And our idea was, let's let people who are applying for these permits know that there's a public notice, and they're going to have to pay extra for the public notice. That's all it was.
And so when you think about how you would go forward, and, you know, you can absorb this extra workload for a certain amount of time, and we're going to say that it's, let's make it, well, it's 100 and some odd permits per year. So let's just say it's 10 per year, or 10 per month, right?
Right.
How many months do you feel like you would need to go and actually stress the system before you had a good sense of whether or not this was the way to go? Are we talking three months or six months, or is it kind of wait and see when?
I think it's really wait and see. When this takes effect, if all of a sudden, you know, we're entering summer months, which is our busiest construction season. So we may find two or three months into this that we're going to be back to you saying, "We need some additional resource, because everything else is falling, you know, other things are falling behind because of this." Although we might be able to say, "You know what? Let's, it hasn't, it hasn't hurt us after three months. Let's just kind of keep going and see." And then if we get to early next year, or sometime next... And then if we get to early next year or sometime next year and we haven't been back to you, then I would probably say that we probably don't need the additional resources.
I mean, I, you know, I have to say kudos to the way that you've brought this forward because this is a great example of where we were all, not all. A lot of us were in support of the notification process. It's the right thing to do and yet you lay out the cost and how it is going to impact the person who's actually applying for that building fee. And I know in, in myself, I feel a greater reticence because you actually have a price tag attached to it. So, I think that was actually a good move on your part so that we recognize and we are then ready, if it were to pass or even not pass, explain to the public why we did what we did. So, thank you for making it very glaringly obvious.
Okay, you're welcome.
Benson?
Okay, I'm going to speak in favor of the, of the motion. I think, one thing that you pointed out Scott earlier in your presentation that, you know, the, the fee that you're describing is consistent with our policies of growth pays for growth. And so, that's, you know, I think it's important to just keep that in mind. But I also recognize that to the extent when we actually have real experience, real data, the fees that you have estimated, they may be overstated, they may be understated. So, I would assume that you will come back and if adjustments need to be made to reflect the, a more accurate estimate of the, of the fees, you'll, you'll do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Dan?
So, I was seriously thinking of supporting it until you made your statement that we want to show people what it's, what this notice thing is costing them or something to that effect. And, which I, I don't think is, we don't do anything in our permitting fees where we, you know, we don't have notice, we don't, you know, as David, as David was pointing out before, on our other permits, we just, we put the cost of the notice as part of the permit fee and we don't say, "And now we're going to show you what it costs you to notify all, everybody else about what you're doing." We don't break it out as a separate notice fee. So, I, I felt a little bit of, so this is sort of, this is a way of, this is a way of, of sort of saying whatever you want as well. You know what I'm talking about, I'm not going to say that specifically. But, so, what I'm, it strikes me that the way we, there's, there's two things that are wrong with this resolution. One is there are no extra costs being incurred. So, we're not adding any FTE. The only additional cost is a sign fee, which you're going to charge people anyway. You don't need our approval to charge a sign fee. So, in that sense, there are no extra costs. And the way we, we, way we have set permitting fees since I've been on this council is that you come to us with a whole set of fees and you reallocate monies based upon a study which is done and you say, "Okay, well, in fact, the fee for this particular item, turns out that's too high, we got to lower that. The fee for this item, turns out that's too low, we got to raise it." But you look at everything in, in the aggregate and you look, you take a global view of how we set fees. We don't suddenly, all of a sudden just raise fees, particularly when we don't have any extra costs. So, you've got the same cost base that you have before we vote on this resolution. It's going to be the same cost base afterwards and so, and your, the whole council policy is you have to recover a certain percentage of your total costs through fees. So, in actuality, what this will do if we improve this is we're going to increase that percentage of, which already, if you, if people recall the budget, we had this discussion, we were already a very high percentage based upon the projections because we had, we had, we already are having a high percentage. So, I, I just think this is premature. I mean, we, where there's no increase in cost, this is revenue increases our permit recovery. We were already at, well within, if not above what the recovery percentage was. So, there's just not a reason to do this now. And if you come back to the council and whenever you're going to come for your next round of permit fees and you want to move things around, that's great. But I really, I really object strongly to the idea of creating this notice fee and unless, you're going to go back for every other fee which requires notice and break out a notice part of, notice element so we can tell everyone what every notice requires for every fee. But just to take this notice, which you didn't like, to put it in there, that, that rubs me the wrong way.
Scott, a couple of questions for you. The sign, so the signage fee, can you just clarify, is that a separate fee above and beyond this or is that embedded in this?
That, it would be embedded in this.
Okay, and is that a known existing fee?
Yes.
And that's how much?
Yep.
How much?
Fifty.
Fifty, okay. So, that's part of this and then- Wouldn't be charged?
It's included in the 325.
It, it would be included in the 325 and the 250.
But if you didn't have the 325 and the 250, you'd still charge it anyway.
We would still charge a $50 sign board fee, yes.
Got it, okay.
Only, right.
Something else Dan raised that I wanted to get Scott to, to expound on and I can't remember what it was. I, okay, so I'm of a mind to support what Debbie has suggested, which is I, I very much like what staff's done here in terms of not just ignoring the costs of this but, but spelling them out for us. And it's a new expense, it's a new cost that staff is incurring and so, I, I think it makes sense to have it come as a new calculation rather than be something that we, we create and then only address whatever on our two-year, three-year cycle of recalculating fees. I do support, whether we go in with no fee and then do the analysis and then set a fee or whether we go in with a fee and then do the analysis and change the fee or take away the fee or whatever, doing the analysis feels like it makes some sense so that we figure out where we actually are. My inclination is-
I just want to make a point, I wasn't advocating any position at that point, I was clarifying.
Yeah, and I, sorry, I sort of, I'm sort of wandering and I'm on a, on a path here that, that has little bearing on, on what's been said. So, and, and to Dan's point, it's, there's no doubt that we're going to have staff spending a bunch of hours on this. We don't get something for nothing. It may not be the number of hours that Scott, it won't be the number of hours that Scott's calculated here, that's an estimate, but it's not zero. And putting some cost on that feels to me like a reasonable thing to do. So, I'm supportive of this as long as the staff does do subsequent follow-up recalculation of this. So, anyone else? I'm, I can't, I don't even know where the vote is going to land at this point. Yeah. All right, so we, all right, so all in favor of adopting this fee, which is what the motion does, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? No?
And I didn't vote.
Nice.
No, and normally, you know, I try to be smart enough and follow, but I'm not smart enough and I'm not following.
Can we call for a voice vote? It was a little bit grumbled in there, I need to know exactly.
I think it's three, huh?
We're at three?
Aye, aye, aye.
All right. Benson?
All in favor, raise your hand. Got it?
And I am abstaining at this point because I'm confused.
So, it's three, three and one extension.
All right. Can I, can I ask, can I ask a clarifying question?
I'm good.
Table it.
You're good, okay. And the no, so you know, you know the no's.
I've got the no's and I've got the yays and I've got the abstains.
Okay.
So, the reason I'm abstaining, or you can just tell me you don't care and I'll shut up.
Oh, I don't think we care, but you-
Okay, that's fine.
At the end of the day, the vote is the vote.
Well, no, and that's, well, because, depending on whether or not you want to, if we went over to understand. Because what I'm, what I was understanding is it was a difference in timing. What I was hearing was test it, go test it, see how much it costs, how many hours it takes and then come back to us. And then the other one that I heard was just implement it now. Is, is that the distinction?
Well, what there is is a motion and the motion says, "Go do it." So, you could certainly come back now with an alternative motion, which says, "Go study it", for instance, or we could just do that without a motion, probably.
Right. If it's tied, it dies.
Yeah.
But you could make another motion to ask staff to actually study this and back.
Can I get a piece of paper because I passed it through? I mean, sorry, can I get the motion itself? But then, but it dies, it dies for-
There's room for another motion here if somebody wants to make it.
I got to figure out what I'm going to say now. Okay, I'm going to look for some help on this because I don't think what I want to say is pass resolution number 1530. I think what I want to say is have staff go away and spend, you know, three to, three to four months to figure out what this thing really costs and what it means to staff and, and come back. I mean, I'm going to put it in layman's terms.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we need a motion on that.
I was going to say, we are doing a fee study in the future in 2018, so I mean, let's just-
But this wouldn't be part of the fee study. This is something where if, if all Scott needs to do is add a line item onto his time card to go through the course of what you call typically some of the busier months, which will give you the opportunity to assess what the real-time allocation is and impact on workload because whatever this person does on this, they don't get to do on something else. So, there's going to be a displacement as they come back to us in September, October and tell us what the fees are.
If you want, you can just direct me to track the time spent on this activity and of course I'll work with Scott to make sure that's done.
But how about you just both nod your heads and say that's what you're planning to do?
Yeah, yes, and I would, I would, I would prefer not to have a time limit put on that because we might find after three months that we don't, we don't feel we have adequate data yet and we want it to keep going a little bit, so.
I would really appreciate if you'd come back, that you don't come, it doesn't come back as a notice fee but comes back built into something else. That if you want to have a different fee for major single-family residential permits, that's fine. But I, the word notice, unless you're going to start imposing notice fees as an element of every permit to break it out for this particular one, I think is inappropriate.
To be consistent.
To be consistent and just build, if you're going to change the fees, change the fees, but don't call it a notice fee.
I guess I'm not sure what your objection to calling it a notice fee.
Because we don't have anything, we don't have any other quote-unquote notice fee in our permit structure. With, as Scott said, we build the cost of the notice into the overall permit fee. So, what I'm suggesting is do the same thing for this as well. If you feel like you need more time on a particular kind of permit because of this, then build that into the permit fee and, but don't start labeling this as the notice fee and have people coming into us and saying, "What in the world is this?"
And I agree, I don't think it should be the notice fee. I think it should be the Dan Grouse wants you to pay an extra $700 fee.
Well, we'll want to track this because obviously, any chance we get to reduce the general fund subsidy, we want to try to do that. And I think that's really what we were trying to attempt this evening. But I think that's fair, we've not done this before. We should just get some data and track it and return should we need to obviously amend our fees.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we move to other business. Councilmember absences, we have none this evening. Planning schedule, Julie?
So, the next council meeting is June 5th, so we have a couple of weeks off. Yay! However, however, do plan on having an executive session on May 22nd. So, we will notice some-
And tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry, and tomorrow evening as well. I apologize, that's right. There is a executive session at 4:30 as well as next Monday evening as well. So, plan on that. I think of particular interest to our community will be on June 5th. We will be returning to discuss Island Crest Park. So, that is still on the schedule for June 5th, returning for you on that. And then likewise of, of interest is the Planning Commission's returning for a first reading on the residential development codes, codes on the 5th. And then looking out ahead, you had directed us to schedule an additional meeting and it looks like that meeting will take place on July 24th. A special meeting. There are a lot of planning items on that meeting and that has been scheduled and that's all I wanted to point out. Oh, I did want to point out, we are suspending this year's planning session, mid-year planning session, which was mid-June. So, due to our workload demands this year, we are suspending that. But most likely that'll return next year. And that's all I have.
Okay. I'm going to miss the 24th meeting, July 24th meeting, just so everyone who cares is about that.
I'll miss May 22nd.
May 22nd?
That's next Monday.
What, what time was the May 22nd meeting? May 22nd?
Well, it can't, it can't be before 5 o'clock or 5:30.
That's a good point, I was thinking 6:00. Because we have to travel from Redmond.
Why don't we say it's, it's 6:00 or whenever you're here?
6:00.
Okay.
Okay, so, good point. So, we'll do, we'll notice that for 6:00 Monday and Wendy, you're out.
I will be here, yeah.
Okay, anything else on planning schedule? Board appointments. So, council members, you will have received an email with applications and staff recommendations. You should let me know if you have an opinion one way or another about those within the next couple of weeks, I think. We've got a little bit of time here, so. But we'll, at the, the June 5 meeting, be trying to finalize that. Councilmember reports. Dave, you want to start?
Sure, just two quick ones, just a quick reminder from the Open Space Conservancy that June 3rd is National Letter Boxing Day, so I'll get out for that. And then I attended, Dan will be there. And then I attended, I don't want to say Julian Kirsten and Ally did a nice job with a prospective candidate meeting. So, we all educated them about the wonders and miracles of being on the city council. And I think there's one person left. But it was, it was interesting for people to gather some facts. There was a lot of people there who weren't going to run but were sort of interested in the process. So, thanks for doing that, Julie and Kirsten.
Dan?
Nothing, I'm not doing anything.
Debbie?
Well, Wendy and I, we were at the ETP meeting and they were talking about 5:20 and stuff. For me, you know, one of the, the interesting parts there is they're starting to look, it was unclear to me whether they were looking at their work plan, their legislative priorities or what exactly the list was that was being debated in terms of stuff they wanted to talk about. But, yeah, from my perspective, one of the important elements there is for us to start to look at, I would call the non, the non-car corridors. And I don't want to say non-motorized because as we know, a lot of the bikes now have motors on them, et cetera. But there seems to be at least a tweak of interest in terms of looking perhaps at both the, the Eastside Rail Corridor and then obviously broaching this whole issue of coming up with an I-90 bike ped corridor discussion because if supported by something like the ETP, just as the master plan gives it credibility with other funding agencies, it would also help us as we go seek other communities' involvement and hopefully dollars.
No community stuff, I would just say Julie, thank you for the city manager report. I thought it was a great addition to the, our modus operandi.
Wendy?
ETP, I would just say, I think that group is trying to decide whether they're a learning and sharing community or an advocacy group. So, that conversation is going to be happening in the next couple of months, I would guess. And so, if anybody here has any opinions, you should let the chair know. And then a shout-out to Cindy Goodwin in Mercer Island Youth and Family Services for this lovely letter, I think we all got in the mail about staying-
I think we all got in the mail about staying connected to your kids from birth to high school. Having a senior, I find this little cheat sheet very handy. And staying connected to your kid at all stages of their development and independence is important. So thank you to Cindy for that.
I'll just add that I served on ETP in my first couple of years on council and ETP at that time was trying to figure out whether it was a advocacy or it's, that is, yeah, that has been a problem, a question forever.
Comes around.
Yeah. Benson?
Just one thing. Just, and the SCA Public Issues Committee, they just had a presentation regarding the veterans levy renewal, possible expansion. So that is coming to your ballot in November. I think Dalton Constein is still trying to figure out how much to ask on that one. There is also another ballot coming, measure levy, access to culture levy coming in August. And so that will be something that's going to be before the voters again. So things to look out for on the ballot.
For me, nothing. So unless there's anything else for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Before 10 o'clock.
Before 10 o'clock.